Good evening and welcome to the Job Development Authority Meeting for Monday, June 7, 2021. Welcome in roll call.
Weigel?
Here.
Dokler?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Gavami?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Veem?
Here.
Maak?
Here.
And Mayor Bochensky?
Here.
We have Korm.
Thank you. Item two, JDA action items. 2.1 Pace Loan Request for Core Scientific.
Members of the Authority, Brandon Baumback, I'm Director of Business Development for the Grand Forks Region EDC, and I'm here to present on Core Scientific Incorporated. We've seen the company a couple of times here, and what they do is a reminder, it's a computer processing company that specializes in ownership and operation of large data centers since 2017. They're expanding into the Grand Forks market with their latest data center. They'll be filling a currently standing building and concurrently constructing a second building. The total project is over $114 million, and what they're here requesting is a participation for a pace buydown note from Baker, North Dakota. A loan from you at just over $269,000 would leverage $500,000 from the Baker, North Dakota. Loan to value is right where we'd like to see these things and is secured through a lien on all equipment. Jeff Pratt, Senior Vice President of Operations and Finance, is on the call if there are any questions, and I myself, of course, would be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions immediately? We can open the public hearing. Seeing none, we can close the public hearing. Ms. Webber?
I'd like to thank Mr. Pratt for his time again, for joining us, and an enthusiastic motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further comments or questions? Yep.
I just wanted to say the same thing. Thank you, Mr. Pratt. I think we've gone through quite a few meetings, and this will probably be the last one for a while, so we're glad that North Dakota and Grand Forks especially is part of Core Scientific's future. So, thank you, sir.
Hey, thank you guys. Thanks for having me repeatedly and the continued support of the city and the city council and yourself. Thanks you guys very much. We're really looking forward to this project.
Wonderful. With that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 2.2 C-Run Loan Request, Roadway Inn.
Hello, Chair Maak, members of the Authority. We have a C-Run application before you for Vinnyac Inc. Doing Business as the Roadway Inn. It's owned by Smiley Tucker and his wife, Mina. It was purchased in 2008 and transitioned from the Road King to the Roadway Inn in 2015. They have no previous loans with the JDA. Their COVID impact is pretty obvious with the border closure and reduction in travel. There's been a significant loss of business. As far as their recovery plans with these loan funds, they plan to install a touchless key card system to reduce transmission of COVID-19 and to protect their guests. They are going to use some working capital to stabilize their cash flow throughout the recovery, and they're hoping to see an increase in travel with events returning in Grand Forks and hope to see the border opening as soon as Canadian vaccination rates pick up. As far as the recommended loan terms, we are recommending for a working capital loan up to $200,000 at 1% interest with a 12-month deferral amortized over 60 months with a blanket UCC lien and a personal guarantee required by the two owners. And with that, I'm willing to stand for any questions.
Thank you. Questions from council? We'll open the public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Sandy?
I have a quick question. As part of the personal loan guarantee, do they provide financial documents for you or anyone else to review to confirm that they actually have the funds to repay the loan?
Yeah, so we require personal financial statements of anyone who is providing a personal guarantee, and we actually ask for that for anyone who has above a 20% ownership stake in the company.
Excellent. Thanks. I'll move approval.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Weigel? Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.3 Startup Loan Request, Tap Room Brew Hall.
Thank you, members of the Authority. This is Startup Grand Forks Loan Program Request. Tap Room Brew Hall is a startup retail location for local and non-local craft beer located in downtown Grand Forks, just on Third Street. They're opening a really innovative establishment with the self-pour taproom. Really interesting stuff. They'll bring about more than 30 craft beers on tap, some wine options, and of course, non-alcoholic beverages as well. So, it's really unique offering. Total project is just over $164,000, and they themselves are putting in quite a lot of that equity. The request here is for $30,000 via the Startup Grand Forks Program. That is to be a 5% interest on that over a term of 60 months with the first year deferred. They have been heard and approved by the Loan Committee back on May 13, the Growth Fund, and May 24, and they have met all programmatic requirements. I'm joined here tonight by both Joe Garceau and Matt McHugh over here, in case there are any questions for them or myself.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, let's open the public hearing. Seeing no one, let's close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Moved by Weber. Second by Gavami. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 2.4 Startup Loan Write-Off, Persephone's Floral.
Good evening, members of the Authority. Some of you may recall back in February of 2020, Persephone's Floral LLC was granted an $18,000 startup loan from the JDA. At that time, the North Dakota Development Fund was also participating in their contribution amounted to a $9,000 loan. Unfortunately, the timing of opening was pretty terrible, as you can imagine, for a retail flower shop. COVID shut down both the retail side of things right away, as well as canceled large events, things like proms, weddings, et cetera. Things are typically large revenue generators for flower shops. So, unfortunately, the business was no longer able to continue operations. In January of 2021, they closed their doors permanently. As of now, no liquid business assets remain, and this was one of the last startup loans approved before we required a blanket UCC lien on all equipment. So, and since this occurred within that initial 12-month deferral, which is standard for startup loans, we are asking today to write off the full $18,000 loan amount. We have spoken briefly with the North Dakota Development Fund as well, who has sort of indicated that they'll likely mirror our action on this once we notify them of that. So, I'd also just mention that we've discussed this with the city attorney, who agreed that this path forward is likely the best. There's, like I said, there's no liquid business assets available for us to collect, so the process of going through that would likely not yield much and would be not cost-effective. So, happy to stand for any questions.
Comments or questions? Mr. Weigel?
If this person were to come back again and apply for another loan a year from now, would they be able to?
They... So, this is just secured against the LLC, so technically, this LLC, you know, we'd obviously keep on file that this LLC owes us money. That's just part of our due diligence. We'd obviously know that this person has got a loan from us before, didn't go well, so that would be a factor in as part of our review process and would be, you know, certainly considered and brought forward at the time if that were to occur. So, it wouldn't outright prohibit them from applying again, but it'd certainly be something we would consider as part of that application should it come.
Sounds good.
Have we ever had that happen before?
No.
Okay.
I should say, not under this program. I'm not sure if there's anything in a different program before, but...
Sure. Mr. Bochensky, yes?
Well, I think it's the nature of the startup loan program. We've expected that this was probably going to happen at some point. It'll probably happen again in the future, and it's a tough pill to swallow, but it's, you know, you're aiming at progressing a company along, and it was a pretty tough situation. With that, I'm going to move for the approval.
Yep. Well, I'd second and agree that it's unfortunate, but this is what this program's for, and it served its purpose, and we've had an amazing track record up until now. So, appreciate all the work that you guys do.
We have a motion and a second, but did we need a public hearing?
We do, yes.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing. Seeing no one, let's close the public hearing. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Six to one, Weigel's stance. Item 2.5 Rendezvous Regional Tourism Council Funding Request.
Good evening. The item before you is a request for a $10,000 annual membership contribution to the Rendezvous Region Tourism Council. This came before this group about a year ago, and at that point, the recommendation was that this was a worthwhile effort, but that it made more sense to run it through Fund 2163, that kind of quality of life form of economic development, rather than the more conventional business assistance that's usually done in Fund 5996. So, that path was kind of followed again this year. The recommendation out of Growth Fund Committee was to refer it to JDA with the recommendation that it be funded out of Fund 2163, so you'll also see it on the council agenda for tonight. I did want to note that there was a late addition to your packet with some materials about the planning process that's going to be getting underway soon, and so now I'd like to turn it over to Julie Reig from the Convention Visitors Bureau to give you a quick summary of what that is, and then answer any questions.
Good evening, members of the Authority. I'm here in support of the Rendezvous Region Tourism Council. Ms. Man could not be here this evening, but we do have a couple of other folks from the Rendezvous Region that are here in support as well. So, hopefully, your questions don't get too detailed for me. What I really wanted to speak about, though, was the addition that was added to your packets regarding the tourism action plan that we're working on. I had mentioned this at the Growth Fund Committee meeting. We've now hired a consultant that will begin his work in the fall, and it will go through the remainder of the year. He is actually an expert, Roger Brooks. He's an expert in tourism. He's very well-known in our industry and has worked with thousands of communities across the nation. Visit Greater Grand Forks has agreed to contribute $5,000 to this program as well. So, in addition to the funding that might come from the city of Grand Forks, we would also fund this program. Grand Forks County will be included in it. These consultants will spend time here, secret shopping, meeting with hospitality businesses, and I think it'll have a real benefit on how we can better promote the region together. Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Gavami?
So, Roger Brooks and his team will be in Grand Forks or throughout the whole region?
Throughout the whole region.
But it will include Grand Forks?
Yes, and I believe they're going to be here for a total of three weeks, is it? Yeah, which is considerably... Any other consultant I've ever worked with, we usually get them for a few days. So, three weeks will... They'll really get a handle on the region.
Thank you. Further questions? Mr. Sandy?
Ms. Richards, is this going to be an annual ask? I mean, I know... Thank you, Ms. Reig.
What I said at last year's meeting when this was discussed is, in the future, it would be nice if we could help contribute to that. Of course, with COVID, our budget has taken a pretty big hit. So, to add this $5,000 plus an additional $10,000 would not be good for us this year. In the future, I would hope that that's something we can at least contribute to or fund, but I do expect that it will be an annual membership.
Great. Mayor, I'd suggest, assuming this passes today and we hear good things again, perhaps till next year, maybe it becomes part of the permanent budget suggestion. Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Weigel?
Ms. Reig, do you continue to sit on the board on behalf of the Growth Fund?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Let's open the public hearing. Seeing no one, let's close the public hearing. Mayor, did you have something? Oh, you have a motion?
I'll second that. I guess this is the test here. Hopefully, it works out great, and it'll be a permanent budget item. So, thank you.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Do you have a motion to adjourn? You have a motion and a second.
We adjourned? We'll keep moving. We'll call the order. Grand Forks City Council Meeting, Monday, June 7, 2021. Ms. Dorst, that roll call, please.
Weigel?
Here.
Dokler?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Maak?
Here.
Gavami?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
And Veem?
Here.
All present. We have Korm.
Thank you. 1.2 Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 1.3 Mayor's Announcements. I'll try to be quick, but I do have a few announcements. I want to give a thank you to Senator Hoven, Dr. Derek Tornier, and Dr. Amikas, who's in attendance tonight. Dr. Derek Tornier is the Director of the Space Development Agency. He was up for a roundtable out at Grand Sky. Really phenomenal opportunity for me to get to sit there with such incredible minds and brilliant minds in the field, and, you know, always great to see Senator Hoven's interest in Grand Forks and moving the airbase forward. A couple of weeks ago, we had the Mayor's Choice Art Reception, another event that Mr. Amikas was at as well, as well as many others in here. I was glad that was an event that the former Mayor Brown had started. We were glad to keep that going, so my wife and I were happy to keep the tradition going, and Marilyn Camerud won the award this year, and she is just an amazing woman with a ton of life and a great soul. So, I was really glad the first year that she was the artist that was chosen, because that was really special. Congratulations to the Grand Forks Public Library. They had their 121st birthday, and they coordinated that with their grand reopening. I had a little impromptu tour over there. I've been through there a couple of times. It looks great, so I hope everyone else gets a chance to go in there and check it out. Last week, I guess a couple of weeks ago now, on the 27th, was the one-year anniversary of Officer Holti's death. The police department had a ceremony to honor the life and sacrifice of Cody. I just wanted to take a moment to really thank the community. Just the number of acts of kindness that we saw coming out of this community and rallying behind each other in the last year was pretty phenomenal to get to watch, and I was just, you know, really grateful for this community, and it's a great place to raise a family. It's a great place to live. So, I was just really happy to see the way the community responded to that. Related to law enforcement, we're going to have our first annual Mayor's Back the Badge Ride. So, it's going to be on June 24. That's an off-road vehicle event. It'll be for UTVs, ATVs, motorcycles, even a golf cart if you got it. It's going to start at the Grand Cities Mall. It'll start with Lacey Shuler, who's going to sing "America the Beautiful." Then, we'll take off in a parade led by a police vehicle down 17th through the greenway downtown, then pass the police station, and back to the Grand... Down Belmont, down 17th, back to the Grand Cities Mall for food trucks and live music. To register your vehicle, you don't have to pay anything, but if you're in the parade, you'll have to register your vehicle and pay a small fine, small fee. Let's call it a fee. All the money, the proceeds, we've got some sponsors that we'll be listing off later, but all the proceeds are going to go for training and equipment for not only the Grand Forks Police Department, but the UPD and the Sheriff's Department. So, if you want to register, go to www.mayorsbackthebadgedrive.com. It was long enough, so that website wasn't taken, luckily, so we've got that. So, please go there, check it out. We had a longtime member of the Board of Adjustments retire, Del Shuler. I want to thank him for his 30 years of service being on the Board of Adjustments for the Grand Forks community. And the next agenda item is going to be an award we're going to give to the Finance Department, but first, I wanted to give a shout out to our Public Health Department, as well as our Nursing and Nutrition Manager, Teresa Knox. She receives awards from the North Dakota Public Health Association, so congratulations to Ms. Knox on receiving the Outstanding Service Award. And our entire Public Health Team has been recognized as the North Dakota Public Health Team of the Year, and it was noted, one of the main reasons the Public Health Team received this Team of the Year award was for their collaboration and coalition with... and working with the community partners to include UND, the Air Force Base, the county, and all true. So, it was really phenomenal. You know, some tough times, so it's nice to be able to get some gratitude back for that. So, thanks to Debbie Swanson and her whole team over there. Phew, that was a mouthful. So, now we are on to two: awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1 Presentations to the Finance Department. Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for December 31, 2019, as well as the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the 2021 Budget.
Well, congratulations to Maureen and her team. Always do a phenomenal job. So, it seems to be kind of an annual recipving of this award, so that just goes to show the incredible work that's being done. So, thank you for that. I believe we've got a plaque, and we're going to take a photo. Is that right? I don't know. If anybody else wants to mention the Finance Team, as I think they say on their behalf, feel free to speak up while we're doing this, but they're doing a phenomenal job. Is there a wall big enough for all of your awards?
You know what they did? They used to give us a separate plaque each year, and we were filling up our wall, our conference room, and then they changed things, and they decided, "We're just going to give you one plaque and just give you a little seal to add on to that same plaque." So, we don't take up nearly as much room.
Heavy seal, is it?
They are heavy.
Go put it back on the wall.
That's right. Mayor, would you mind if I just said a couple words? Thank you. I just did want to say just a couple words, if that's okay. You saw a couple of key finance staff with us. Many others had conflicts tonight, but we usually come here twice a year for awards. It worked out great this time, where we were notified around the same time period, so we could bring both of them to you at the same time. There's two awards that you saw listed. One is for budget, one is for reporting, basically. Candy is my key person on the financial reporting side. Couldn't do it without her, and Mike Vontenstal is my key person on the budget side. Couldn't do it without him. And Sherri, she's everywhere. So, couldn't come here day in, day out without their support, so I really appreciate it. It's the 34th consecutive year on the Finance Reporting Award and the 14th consecutive year on the Budget Award. So, wanted to thank all the staff. So, thank you.
You know, I kind of... We could have probably given a round of applause to the Public Health Team. I did miss that. So, if people got their hands, let's give one more round of applause.
Okay, and then 2.2 is the Team Grand Forks Legislative Briefing.
Mr. Wilford, President/CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, Grand Forks, East Grand Forks. Take the stage, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Bochensky, members of the City Council. Thank you for allowing Team Grand Forks to provide a brief recap of our top-level community accomplishments during the 2021 North Dakota Legislative Session. First, what is Team Grand Forks? Team Grand Forks formed 12 years ago with the chamber bringing together the city, county, EDC, and UND to jointly identify key projects, mainly infrastructure projects, that we could collectively work on to be funded by the state legislature. Over the past six sessions, nearly $1 billion of funding has been secured. Team Grand Forks also meets on a monthly basis to develop a strategy to help us strengthen relationships with legislators and state leaders while showcasing what's been done with the funding from the previous sessions. We also work to identify priorities and opportunity to pursue during future legislative sessions. We've already started to meet on a monthly basis. Councilman Weber, Councilman Vian, Todd Feeland are the city's representatives on that group. We communicate our priorities and our strategy to the 12 Grand Forks legislators. Over the years, and once again this session, our local delegation worked together very closely on these top community projects, and this is really, I think, the big thing that separates Grand Forks from other communities in North Dakota. We have joint priorities, and we work together regardless of party to get things done. Now, on to what was accomplished in the 21th session. First off, the UAS part of the budget. $30 million was approved. All of that touches Grand Forks. Grand Sky received $7 million. We had set a 3.5 minimum, and we requested 7.5 million to develop the next tranche of infrastructure out at Grand Sky at the Air Force Base. Like I said, we received 7 million, so very successful there. Beyond visual line of sight, we were hoping to get $20 million. We received 19 million plus 5 million carryover from the previous session. This project continues to work with Vantus and is headquartered in Grand Forks out at Grand Sky. UAS Test Site received $3 million, and this operation's also headquartered in Grand Forks County. And then finally, $1 million was appropriated to the UAS training, and most of that money will end up being used by companies that... UAS companies that are headquartered in Grand Forks but are working in other parts of the state. So, in total, the UAS funding this session that was approved was $30 million, and that's on top of last session, where we received $31 million. So, this is really helping jumpstart UAS in our region and in our community. Next, Keith Lund is at a prospect meeting tonight and is unable to be here, so I'm going to give a little recap of all of economic development funding successes as well. First of all, the LIFFunds, which stands for Legacy Innovation Technology Fund. It was first approved in the 2019 session at $15 million. The goal was to diversify North Dakota's economy through commercialization of new technology. Last session, 19 projects of that money... from that money were approved for a total of $15 million. I think the good news there is that, thanks to the work of the EDC, eight Grand Forks companies, 42% of the total money, receive funding in Grand Forks. So, we ended up getting more than our share, again showing that entrepreneurial spirit here in our community. In the 21th session, $15 million was approved again, and we expect that we'll get a big chunk of that money back to Grand Forks as well. Next, University of Research, established priority for legacy fund investment moving forward, which was really, I think, the baseline success in that area. And then finally, I want to talk about the Career and Technical Education, CTE Workforce Centers. It was established that $70 million would be put in that fund to expand CTE centers across North Dakota. I think with workforce being the number-one issue for the business community, this is really important. Grants between $500,000 and $10 million will be available for each center. Legislative prioritizes that the centers include multiple K-12 school districts, align K-12 and post-secondary education, involve industry, and I'm proud to report that Grand Forks already has a steering committee that's been established that's already beginning to work on the feasibility of this center. So, we have every intent as a community to seek some of this money for a Grand Forks program. So, both in the UAS area and in the economic development area, 2021 was an extremely successful session. So, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to UND President, Dr. Andy Amikas, to give us an update on how well we fared with the University of North Dakota. So, Dr. Amikas.
Mayor Bochensky, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here, and I'll take only partial credit for the successes we've had. It was really the work of this entire group. We talk about Team Grand Forks, and I was brand-new to the whole process, and to see this community come together benefited both the city, the county, and also the university. It was really something to be an incredible part of. And just to note, another accomplishment beyond the legislative session, of course, is the selection by Grand Forks or of Grand Forks to be the winner of the Larry Abernathy Award, which is presented by the International Town Gown Association, and that combination just really indicates a great partnership. Again, this was my first time through the legislative session, and I was pleased by all the support we got from local legislators and members like you. And as a consequence, we were able to earn what we call our Needs-Based Budget. So, the legislature had passed in previous sessions what we call the Higher Ed Funding Formula. It's a formula that determines how the entire 11-school university system is funded, and consequently, we were fully funded by that formula. The governor, as you might recall, had suggested a 7.5% reduction from that number, but instead, we earned that full amount. So, for UND, it was $151 million over the biennium, and for the School of Medicine and Health Sciences, it was $68 million. And so, that was really a very good news story. On top of that, we had a number of great initiatives that were also met with success. We had a modest pay raise, a merit-based pay raise for our state employees, our faculty and staff members, 1.5% in the first year, 2% in the second year, and this is consistent with what all state employees had earned in this legislative session. In addition, the legislature funded a nursing consortium, which includes UND. consortium, which includes UND, to the tune of $1.36 million. Previously, that was taken out of Hyde from UND to pay for the entire system. So this is a good news story. In addition, we rely heavily on what's known as a matching program, or the State Challenge Grant Program, where the state will put in dollars that are matched by donors. Donors will put in $2 for every dollar that the state gives. And this supports student scholarships as well as professorships at UND. And so we earned through that program $1.7 million. And then the School of Medicine and Health Sciences earned another $1.5 million for that challenge grant program. Keep in mind that the School of Medicine had been removed from consideration for that program in an earlier session, but we were able to add that back in. Again, this benefits our students directly. On the research side, you heard about the research funding that comes along with the legacy fund earnings. So the exact amount is not known, but this comes from a pot of about $30 million. In addition, we earned $4 million to support our efforts with the Space Force and amplifying our work on space-related research on campus. And then finally, on the research side, we had energy funded to the tune of $5 million to support the EERC as the state's Energy Research Center, as well as another $10 million in specific funding to support energy research at the EERC. And then finally, in a couple other initiatives, the legislature apportioned $5 million of federal funding to support the flight apron for the UND aviation program. This was the continuation of a project that started several biennium ago. And this allows us to keep our planes and our people safe as they're taxiing and moving about the flight apron out at the airport. And then finally, the forensic examiners that are supported by our School of Medicine received $1 million to support this critical need for the state to do forensic examination. So in sum, it was a tremendous session for us. There were two items that we did not get funded for. One was a high-speed or high-performance computing network upgrade. We'll find other ways and other sources, perhaps federal funding to support those. And then finally, the renovation of Merrifield and Twomley Halls, which is an important part of our campus renovation. That was not funded this time, but we'll look forward to the next session as we move forward. So thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. And I'll turn it over to Todd Feeland for his remarks.
Mayor Bochensky, members of the City Council, thank you, President Armakost. We forgot that one on your list, Mayor. So that Town Gown Association was quite an award. It's an international award, but it's really across this country, and it's to be selected. It's infrastructure, it's partnerships, and all the things we've been working on. So thank you for remembering that. I'm here on the infrastructure piece, which is really important. Later, after this presentation, we're going to talk about the grade separation. We're going to talk about south-end development, and a lot of these state programs are going to fit into what we're trying to do there. Number one was the Prairie Dog infrastructure funding, and that's where we had high hopes. Senator Wardner was one of the big leaders of that. We're in a certain bucket. And so cities, counties, townships, and finally, airports are able to receive funding in those buckets. As you recall, we did get to the bucket of $2.5 million. We did not get to our second bucket, which would have been about $10 million, but at least we got one bucket. The one thing the state of North Dakota did through a House Bill 1015, which is the OMB bill, which is kind of the cleanup bill, they did move cities after SIF, which is the Strategic Investment Improvements Fund. And so our $2.5 million and our $12 million bucket got moved after SIF. So our $2.5 million bucket this current session that we're about ready to end, our first bucket of $2.5 million was before SIF. So what the state's done is they put SIF before. And so after SIF, it'll be cities, counties, and townships after that. So we'll have to see. We're going to have some good oil prices, a lot of production for us to get past SIF, and then to our bucket. So I think regardless, even if we don't get to our bucket, I think SIF has maximum flexibility at the state of North Dakota to provide partnership funding for projects that we're going to look at. So I don't think all is lost, even if we don't get our direct funding. I think we still want to look at SIF because it has a lot of flexibility to fund infrastructure. So that's the one note on that, and that's all us. Also, House Bill 1425, the infrastructure loan program, that's run through Bank of North Dakota. We have been the recipient. The maximum right now was 15 million. They moved it to 40, so we have a $25 million increment. And these are 2% loans up to 30 years. And so at 2% at 30 years especially, we could probably sell a bond less than, at 20 years, less than 2%, which is pretty good for right now. But at 30 years, it's a pretty competitive progress. So that's great, because we've used, as we've talked, we've opened up several areas throughout the city of Grand Forks with primary sectors. So that's north of Simplot, it's Highway 2 and Gateway Drive, in and around Seppis Manufacturing and Walmart, all the off-site infrastructure around the water treatment plant site that's also going to now serve core scientific. And then finally, I-29 South where Ironhide is. Those are the areas that we put funding in as part of that. So we have this $25 million increment. So I think when we look at further developments, whether new pump stations or rehabilitation, we have that $25 million increment over these next two years to help fund. I think that's really important for us. The projects we really hit, we've talked a lot about, and the gentlemen from KLJ are going to talk about this. DeMers, I was reviewing the presentation. We've been at this great separation for a long time. Let's try to get something done. So that's kind of where we're at. Now let's quit talking about it, and let's actually get it done. So we're further along on this great separation than we ever have. We have prioritized. One of the things we've been criticized, we've got to prioritize our projects. So just in the order of when we can get things done, we said the great separation at DeMers, and 42nd Street is our number one, because we're near that. That's why KLJ will be here to update that. And obviously, that's a big deal for public safety, both our police and fire. It's a big deal for Burnley to Northern Santa Fe public safety. It's a big idea. Big deal for our destination corridor. It's hard to say you have a destination corridor that stops that and forces people to wait at a train tracks for quite a while. Not only wait for the train, but then have it go jog back and forth for 20 minutes, as I've gotten many emails and texts from council presidents saying we have to work out there. And it's pretty maddening sitting there for 20 minutes. So that's really been why our priority has been that, and we're far enough along. That's exciting. I think the other part is when we've gone to Bismarck, we went there in early March with Director Panos, and what he did acknowledge is that there should be funding for projects like that. And so that's the important piece, is that we have a partner in the state of North Dakota, whether it's the ARPA stimulus funds that they're going to have, and they're going to have a little over $1 billion to allocate for their own needs and others this fall when they come back to session, or other funding streams. He committed that he would look for money to go forward with that project. Important for us to be a good partner and have good projects and have community support. That's the number-one priority. Otherwise, the thing's not going to partner with us. The second thing we really came out of this session is the 47th Avenue interchange, and whether that's at 47th or 49th. We met with Director Panos as part of Grand Forks Day, similar to the great separation, a week later. They moved that forward, they being the North Dakota Department of Transportation. $3 million EIS, where we agreed to pay 50% of it. They've gone through a selection process at the state of North Dakota. Our colleague, David Karinko, was on the selection panel, so a firm has been selected. They're negotiating the agreement, and they're looking to move forward with that study as we speak. So that's exciting, that that's moving forward too. And they see a need. So they wouldn't be funding an EIS if they didn't agree that there's a need. And remember, 32nd Avenue South is the reason we argued. We can't put any more traffic on 32nd Avenue South if we're going to continue to grow South. Obviously, it does open up secondarily some growth opportunities that we want to move forward with. So. And then finally, the bridges, where Mr. Cavani is on that group with the MPO, looking at traffic and other things, safety and all those sorts of things. So we're progressing on all fronts on those things. But I think we prioritize them in the right vein about getting things done. I should also say that the great separation, it's a priority project for the University of North Dakota. They want an entrance onto the community that isn't embraced by a train track. So I think that's a huge benefit for them also. There was, the one thing that we probably need to bring back, and I don't think administratively we want to recommend this, but House Bill 1419 was a street utility funding. So this really came out of the city of Bismarck, did some studies, and they want to try to relieve themselves of special assessments. Special assessments for infrastructure related to renewal-type infrastructure. And so that bill provides an opportunity where we could have a utility fee in lieu of special assessments. You can't have both. We wanted to do an "and" solution, but either you have a special assessment on renewal infrastructure or you use these fees right now. For example, on a street renewal project, it's generally an 80% city-funded, 20% special assessment. The new requirement would be that 20% would have to be a utility fee, and you couldn't go back and forth and use it on different jobs. It also requires voter approval, so they did require kind of a higher benchmark to do that. So that's one thing we should keep on our radar. Finally, there was a huge bonding bill, House Bill 1431, and a significant amount of that, over $1 billion, went to the Fargo-Moorhead diversion project. So I think the goal of this session with the state of North Dakota was to remove that project, move forward with Service Valley Flood Project 2 and Minot, get some of those projects out of the way, so that when we come back in two years, we'll have some opportunities to find other projects, whether the transportation projects that we want in our community, or other types of projects. So I think it's a big deal. Let's clear the deck so that when we come back in two years, we have our priorities in line. We've done enough study and engineering so that we're ready to go in good stead. So I think that's a really important item. Lastly, is House Bill 1020, and that's on the state water commission's budget. And an important part of that is that we are a prime partner on the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. And sometimes you wonder if it's worth it, but you just have to look out now, and it's really worth it, that we need water supply. We can fix a lot of things. We can get through a COVID pandemic. We can work through floods. It's going to really be hard to work through a water supply problem. So that's a huge issue, and it's probably a much greater issue than the first two that I mentioned. So that's great. That's moving forward. That has, they're looking up to about almost $90 million in funding under a 75-25% cost share, 75 being state, 25% being local cost share. The Fargo metro, they're 60, almost 68% of the project were about 13-plus% of the project with East Grand Forks. So our metro, and so that's a big project for us. Our cost share on that is, depending on if it's a 40-year, 2% loan, is $109,000. A 30-year, 2% is estimated to be $134,000 a year. So you're going to see that come your way within user agreement, but that's a big deal for us also, and in the entire region for us to move forward. With that, Mayor and City Council, that's our update. Another good session, and you'll see us using these, importantly, these funding streams and bills over the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Feeland, President Armakost, Mr. Wilford, appreciate the update. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, there you go.
All right, 2.3, DeMers Avenue, 42nd Street, grade separation briefing.
Mr. Grasser.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky, members of the City Council. The item of the underpass has been on the city's radar in the past. Just a quick refresher, back in 2013 and 14, we were looking at developing the alternatives and trying to get to an environmental document. The city commissioned KLJ at that time to go take on that study. They did bring that to a conclusion in 2014 with an environmental document. The document itself was never filed with the federal agencies because we didn't have a funding source. So it was kind of one of those catch-22s. We had it, but we didn't have it because we didn't have the money. Fast forward here to 2020. We identified the underpass, a grade-separated crossing as one of the priorities for the city of Grand Forks. And to expedite and get us to a potential construction activity, we went back and recommissioned KLJ to come back and take a look at alternatives. They reviewed some of the old alternatives, added a couple of new ones, actually, that I'm excited about. What you see tonight is going to be information that we're going to, the next step is we're going to roll this out to the public for comment. There's no decisions or anything to be made tonight. This is part of our environmental document development process. So we're giving you first look at what's going to get rolled out to the public. And again, from there, then we'll just keep going through the alternatives and cost analysis. So with that, we have a couple of gentlemen from KLJ. I think Scott is doing backup in the back, and Mr. Travis Weber is going to do the actual presentation. So with that, I will turn it over to Travis to take a look at, start the presentation.
Thank you, Al. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Pleased to be here tonight to provide an update on this project, kind of where we're at. I think Al provided a lot of background on what had been done. I've personally been with this project since 2004, so it's got a long history with me personally. So it's really good to see it getting back off the ground. This was looked at way back, as far as 1998, as part of a corridor study. And in 2006, in that timeframe, we looked at 11 different alternatives, narrowed it down to four. The project was put on hold, probably funding-related, in 2014, as was mentioned. Again, we drove that study as part of a kind of a corridor preservation. This was right at the height of the oil boom. Train traffic was up. So we looked at making sure that we'd be able to preserve the corridor for a project into the future. At that time, federal highway didn't approve the document because there was no funding source, but the right-of-way was procured for. Two of the alternatives that we looked at, I'll show you what those are. And so the first two that you see here, the left one was the preferred alternative at the time, and this was our west mainline alignment. And that lowered 42nd Street and shifted it to the west and created a reconnection. And when you see just 42nd Street lowered, it creates kind of what we call a jug-handle connection. It creates two intersections to reconnect DeMers and 42nd Street. And so that was the preferred alternative. Right-of-way was kind of preserved on the west side there. Really, to just kind of that campus crest development, as that was picking up steam, just to make sure that, you know, it didn't prohibit any future works. And the alternate at that time was just lowering the intersection, staying within that exact same footprint, and just lowering both DeMers and 42nd Street down. So those were the two that were studied back in 2014. I think, as mentioned, the drivers of this project still today, you know, not only safety, but train delays. Right now, the current traffic, the current train delays, they do meet FRA, which is the Federal Rail Association, criteria for a grade-separated underpass. So it does meet the federal guidelines for that. So at that time, too, just as a little more history and background on that, we did evaluate overpass options as well. What you're going to see tonight are just underpass options going underneath the BNSF rail line. But back in 2004, 05, 06, we did look at overpass options as well. One of the big differences is the vertical clearance between a train and a car. There's an additional five feet that we need to go over, over the rail tracks, if we're going to go over for train clearance as opposed to vehicle traffic going under. So one of the challenges that we get is our ability to tie down, especially in the north end, at James Ray Drive at UND. We can't touch down and maintain that access because we're too high. Our grades would get too steep to be able to maintain that. Another issue that we get is that if there's going to be an intersection on the south side, that might be still on the downgrade. And so as you're coming over the hill towards a stoplight, you know, having a 5% grade there, that can present a safety issue in our climate that we have as well. So those were looked at, they were evaluated, but ultimately ruled out when we first studied this. So where we're at today, Al mentioned, we're back into the CADDEX, trying to finalize the environmental document, narrow down our alternatives. You know, we were looking at the two alternatives that we had in 2014, as well as we've reintroduced right now three alternatives that have impacts to the golf course. And so those are the ones that we're looking at. At the time, in 2014, we wanted to avoid impacts, and that's why those weren't considered. We've had really good discussion and interaction with UND. There's a lot of support for that project. Any impacts, obviously, would have to be mitigated. So we're working through that process as well. But a major factor in that, in getting federal highway approval, is having the owners', you know, approval of the conditions, what's going to get mitigated, how it's going to end up in its final state. So I want to walk through the alternatives that we're looking at. I'll start again and just kind of go through a little bit of the pros and cons of the ones we looked at. I'll start with the ones that were part of the 2014 study, and this was the lowering the intersection in its current location. So what that does is it just creates the one intersection, and from a traffic operation standpoint, this operates the best. When it's just the one intersection compared to the two, this provides approximately a 30% improvement over the conditions you see today in overall traffic flow, when compared to probably about a 25% improvement when we have the jug-handle in the two intersections. Just for context, both would operate, both would meet standards, make the improvements that would be necessary. But from a traffic operations standpoint, one intersection operates better. With this, there's minimal right-of-way needs. We're staying within the existing footprint. There's a lot of retaining walls. With this, one of the impacts would be the gas station that's in the southwest quadrant. We wouldn't be able to lower the grade of DeMers and still maintain that access off DeMers in its current configuration. So there's costs associated with that. Anytime that we're lowering the intersection, the entire intersection, both DeMers and 42nd, there's a risk of potential flooding. A lift station goes out, you know, a heavy rainfall beyond what would be anticipated or designed for. You might have those temporary flooding situations or snow drifting, things like that. And with this alternative as well, maintaining any sort of traffic during construction would almost be impossible. So you'd be looking at closures for at least a year of both DeMers and 42nd. Those have 15,000 vehicles a day that you'd have to contend with that would be detoured. I'll talk more about that in a little bit. The other alternative, the west mainline, this was the preferred alternative in 2014 that we preserved right-of-way corridor for. So that lowers just 42nd Street. It shifts it over to the west. So you're able to maintain traffic on 42nd Street during construction because traffic has been shifted. It utilizes that city-owned right-of-way. It was a benefit. Doesn't have golf course impacts as well. And, but with this one, again, there's the potential for that gas station relocation just because of the proximity of the bridge, as well as real of the proximity of the bridge as well as really the lowering of 42nd Street. It might be pretty tough to maintain that. And then it's going to be hard to maintain traffic on Demers during construction as well during this, just because of the proximity of everything between the interchange and 42nd Street. I'll go through three of the new alternatives or I guess the ones that we're reintroducing. They were studied initially and then kind of dropped off, but, and these all impact the golf course in a different way. And the first one is what we call our east flip alternative. And this keeps 42nd Street on its current alignment and then creates the jug handle connection on the east side. So it preserves those developable city-owned lots in the southwest. It improves the intersection spacing from the interchange to where the new connection to 42nd will be. There are golf course impacts however, and then 42nd Street would need to be closed during construction for this one as well. The next one's the east mainline, and this is really a mirror image of the west mainline except now our impacts are on the east side. So 42nd Street would be shifted to the east lowered. The connection to 42nd would be on about its existing location. So what this does and one of the main benefits is that it utilizes that triangular undeveloped lot in the northeast. It expands the developable area kind of in the north side in the U N D area. The lots in the southwest are still available. And another thing is that with the connection coming in from the west side to the east on 42nd Street, it allows for the potential if that golf course was ever to be redeveloped. It provides a really nice access point in an intersection that would flow into that area. One of the downsides again is the golf course impacts that would have to be contended with and mitigated. And then our last alternative is the east full intersection. This is very similar to just lowering the intersection except we shift it far enough to the east to avoid impacts to the gas station. Again, best for traffic operations. We only have one bridge structure. Since we're lowering that, 42nd Street would be able to maintain traffic during construction. It utilizes again that undeveloped lot in the northeast while it really expands the area for development in not only the northwest but also the southwest as well. Again, those same cons with the intersection being lowered, some of the flooding risk, things like that. Demers would have to be partially closed during construction and then of course there are golf course impacts as well. So those are the five alternatives that we're refining, looking at, probably going to bring to the public here for our public meeting. So as I mentioned, we're looking at as part of this, not only the impacts, traffic in the future, but also how we're going to maintain traffic during construction. It's a big project at a very busy intersection. And so when we're evaluating construction delays, obviously if we close Demers, we close 42nd, this traffic has to get detoured, go somewhere else. It takes a longer time. So as we analyze this, just for example, if 42nd Street is closed and all the movements that can go through left or right, it equates to about 2,500 hours of additional user delay per week for any closure. And, you know, extrapolate it over the course of a year, that's 132,000 user delay hours per year and something similar for Demers. And so we use that data because there's not an actual construction cost associated with this, but there's obviously user delays. It impacts the public. And we use that to assess whether or not it makes sense to build a bypass because that does have cost or additional shoring that might make it easier to maintain traffic, things like that. So it's certainly one of the considerations that we want to take into consideration because of the busyness of this intersection and how important it is to maintain traffic for the users. So some of the stakeholder coordination, it touched on a little bit, but we've had very good conversations with U N D about the golf course because they would be impacted directly as well as their properties to the north and how that would work. And so far have been very favorable about the project, you know, with the understanding that any golf course impacts would be mitigated. The reconfiguration of the course at the end of the day so that they still have a nine-hole playable course would be a requirement and they need to be agreeable to any of those changes that would be, would be made. And, or the N D D O T, they're also a partner on this project because Demers Avenue is a state highway. It's 297. So we need to go through their procedures, their requirements, their standards, all of those things through this as well. So they're a partner in this as well. And then of course, B N S F and the rail because that's the impetus and the driver of the project is going under. There'll be a participation element if this gets funded ultimately through their standards, but we've had ongoing coordination. The communication lines have been open. That's been very good so far as well. So those have been the major participants and there'll obviously be all the landowners, the businesses in the area that will work through in the coming days as well. So for next steps, we're here today, provide the update to you guys first. And then next, we're going to have a public meeting in about two and a half weeks here on June 24th in this room. We'll have a public open house from 5:00 to 7:00. That will include a presentation similar to this, probably expand it a little bit more. And that'll be live streamed as well on the Grand Forks Facebook page. And our goal then from there is to narrow down these alternatives. It's pretty difficult in environmental document to carry forward five alternatives. We'd like to get that narrowed down, refine those alternatives, complete the environmental documentation, make a selection on a preferred alternative. They talk about funding that came up so that we can proceed to final design and right-of-way acquisition is going to be important because if everything goes well and everything falls into place, if the funding is there, we want to have a shovel-ready project. And there's the potential with the schedule that we're on now for construction to begin in 2023. A lot of things have to fall into place for that to happen, but it is possible so to get, to get things moving. Estimated construction cost right now at a very high planning level, these alternatives haven't been refined and there's a lot of ways this can get built, looking at probably somewhere between 40 and 60 million from the high end. So that is where we're at. A lot of work's been done today, but there's a lot more to do. And with that, that's all we had for the presentation and updates and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys would have.
Thank you. Any questions from council at this time? Mr. Veen.
Well, I'm going to have a question. Maybe this one might even be for Mr. Grasser. And it has to do with the Burlington Northern Center for, you know, we've always had issues with railroad crossings, right? And the ability to even add additional sidewalks or bicycle paths up on 52nd, I believe it is. This is actually eliminating a crossing that's got to make them feel much better from a safety perspective. Is there any trade-offs we can get with them if we actually eliminate this crossing to maybe expand 55th Street or something like that and get a pedestrian sidewalk crossing as a, as a part of this?
I'll answer that in very general terms, but yet Burlington Northern's difficult to work with. You're right. Yeah, but we will leverage this thing every way we can to get, you know, to get those crossings. I don't want to go through the whole railroad crossing business with B N, but we will certainly leverage these things. We do have some needs, as you pointed out, 55th would be one of them. And we'll, we'll leverage these alternatives. I'll call them closures because you're basically closing this intersection on the railroad, from the railroad's perspective. So we'll leverage them as much as we can.
And just one other question. I think one of the issues I have with this, and I like the options here, but the unintended consequence is snow. And like any underpass, they can, you know, have a pump failure or whatever it is. But what I'm somewhat concerned about, there's no A under significant storms, snowstorms, whatever to close anything off. It's really safety, safety purposes. And what's unfortunate, the geometrics at this location are terrible. I don't know if you can find any that are any worse than this with interstate, all the different things here. It's almost like a no-win situation. And my only one other question was, is, is the solution truly better than what exists today? Because the biggest option problem today is, is the delays. I mean, you got, you just went through a little bit of the number and the amount of traffic here. It's really significant and the impact of delays is significant. It's kind of that trade-off that I sometimes have concern about because there have been in other locations, significant impacts to health and welfare of people when you have the snow issues that could have during severe situations. That would be my, my biggest concern.
If I can comment, I think that moving this into the public comment realm is going to help us define all of those things and have us look at it at alternatives and design and whatnot that might, might help mitigate those things. But again, I think the law, the short answer is I think moving it into this public discussion phase will, will help us define some of those things.
Mr. Rygo first, then we'll go with Mr. Sandy and Mr. Weber.
Just a couple of quick questions. When you talk about the 2,550 user delay hours per week, if, if 42nd Street were to close, do you have any idea what that is currently while the trains are running? Because I would estimate that there's quite a few hours where people are not passing through that intersection that would add up to a big number as well. Is there any idea on that?
We know, yeah, right off the top of my head, I know that it meets the criteria. The criteria is 30 vehicle hours per day right now, and it meets that criteria. And I know it's more extensive than that. I don't think it's probably double that, but you know, it's in excess of 30 hours per day of vehicle delay hours that's seen with the trains right now.
Perfect. And the only other thing I'll hit on is really the, truly the public safety aspect of this. Right now, if there's a train that is going across 55th, it's going across Demers, we've got a Columbia Road overpass that is partially shut down. You are trapped in having two fire stations on the north end, one at Washington and Demers, that if they take the correct direction, they're going to get there in time. And I know they would because we've got very, very capable firefighters. But we've got one station. There's three stations on the south end of Grand Forks that are not going to be able to get by until they find out that, hey, we've got three intersections now blocked. I saw this a couple of years ago while I was out the park with my son. There was a fire over by my house, over in the West Plum Drive area, and we had a train going through. One truck was able to get there from station two, the quickest, but the others were racing that train to 55th Street to try and make it across. And so we, we talk about these things and it truly is a public safety issue for people living in, on the north end of Grand Forks, specifically that northwest corner of Grand Forks. So I'm happy that Mr. Phelan and the mayor and President Sandy were talking about this. I think it's significant for the city of Grand Forks. And anybody that's gone through that intersection understands, one, how frustrating it is. Anybody that works in public safety understands how frustrating it is when you're trying to get somewhere to help somebody. But instead of going at Demers and 42nd, you go all the way to Columbia or Washington. So it's something that I felt should have been done years ago. I'm glad we're, we're tackling the subject now.
Thank you, Mr. Rygo. Who's the ward member up there in the northwest? I can't remember.
I heard he's one of the best.
Okay. Mr. Sandy.
Talk to yourself. You are one of the best, no doubt, Danny. Question, 40%, two of the five of these alternatives encroach on what I would probably estimate as an incredibly expensive gas station. The 40 to 60 million dollar estimate we have in here doesn't include relocation of the gas station or purchasing that property or any, anything of the sort, I assume.
It, it kind of does. And that's why it's probably such a wide range. But we've considered in the cost, at least at a high level, the relocation of that gas station. And I think was one of the main drivers for introducing additional alternatives that potentially could, could avoid relocation there.
Got it. Can I ask, I know you, you already touched on this on the golf course mitigation. Any thoughts on, I mean, we can't create more land over there. There is no driving range anymore, so perhaps there's another acre or acre and a half sitting there, but that's going to take a complete reconfiguration of that golf course to get back to nine holes. Any idea what that would entail or the amount of effort?
We've, we've kind of laid some of that out. In fact, we dealt with a project a couple of years ago that took a highway through Newtown, North Dakota Golf Course. And so worked with a golf course architect on a North Dakota D O T project and had to reconfigure their golf course. So we've got really good data and history on that. We've, you know, had discussions, because there's no more land to be able to, to reconfigure the course, it would probably change it from a par 36 to a par 35. So we'd be shortening a hole, changing a par four to a par three to create a little bit of additional space, really trying to minimize the amount of greens and tee boxes that we would have to reconfigure because those are the expensive elements of a golf course. And so we've, we've had some preliminary, very high-level, at least sketches in layouts for what the impacts to each of the alternatives would do to the golf course and, and have considered that as well in this.
Thank you very much. For the record, my employer owns that piece of land that's in the northeast corner. I, I don't have a conflict of interest because if the city or anyone purchases it, none of it goes to me. But I thought I'd let everyone know today that that is a fact, that our, the Aerospace Foundation owns that property. Thank you.
Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if this is lunacy or just heresy, but I ask this, it seems like every two or three years. So please indulge me. This problem needs to be addressed, clearly. But as, as Mr. Veen has pointed out, this is kind of a no-win solution and expensive at 40 to 60 million dollars. My question has to do with the possibility of a railroad, rail yard redevelopment. We know that we're going to have rail needs on the north end as we continue to develop industry out there, including the likelihood of a unit yard being put out there. Also, we continue to have problems with the mill spur and, and delays downtown. The movement of the whole rail yard to north of town is obviously going to be more expensive than, than the project that's being envisioned. But there are tremendous economic development benefits that would come with that redevelopment. This has been very successful in towns like Sioux Falls with their railroad, railroad redevelopment project. So before we go any further, I just thought I'd get to ask the question one last time. Has that been considered, weighed at all? I know that there have been studies going back over the last decades, looking at this possibility. Has that been dusted off at all?
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things we could do with this one is just do a bit of a refresher on some of the past studies and maybe try to update dollars and think. I don't, I don't want to portray that we're going to get into a whole, a heavy evaluation of, of that particular alternative. But I think we could brush up, it's kind of like the overpass, you know, you can, you can take a going over. You know, there's some things that, that you'll find out relatively quickly, whether that kind of is a goal or a no-go. I think we can do a kind of a quick review of that.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Grasser. But I, one last pitch, even if it ends up being, you know, 200 million dollars, we need to consider the potential economic development of, of being able to recapture that entire corridor from the downtown through at least 42nd. Thanks. Ms. Mock.
So are we going to present potential costs for each of the alternatives? Or are we holding that for now? Is that going to be part of that public input meeting?
I think at this point in time, we're at a pretty high level on the alternatives. So we're, I think what you see for costs is essentially that range that we have up there. Again, any, any one alternative has a number of different things that could, could, could go into it. It's just, it's too many unknowns right now. I wouldn't be comfortable trying to refine that, that estimate. I think we leave it at a broad range. Again, property acquisition starts to really impact some of those different, different alternatives and costs, so.
Well, I guess that's kind of where my mind is with some of what Mr. Sandy was mentioning with the gas station, but also I would imagine that if we have to mitigate the golf course, that wouldn't be a small cost for any of those alternatives where we're trying to mitigate that. Will we include that as part of that cost estimate?
I think what, we'll send this out to the public for some comment. Once, once we start getting some of those ideas or objections or concerns, we can then start translating those into refining these broad ideas into a more refined cost estimate or series of cost estimates. But, you know, right now, we're just at a pretty high level yet.
But all of that will go into, as we refine the alternatives?
Yep, all of that, all of that will happen. And, and that's why the study won't be done next week.
Okay. And then with any of the alternatives that impact the 4F land, is there concern that that would take us out of the C A D X and into like an environmental assessment?
I think we have two questions on, on the C A D X. One is if, if we end up utilizing state dollars, then, then some of the federal C A D X categories don't necessarily have as much weight. The other one though is, is in a, in a 4F, you do look at what the other alternatives are. So if you have an alternative that might require a full absolute relocation of a buyout and relocation of a gas station, that weighs into some of that balance. And so I think all of that, you know, 4F isn't an absolute, but it, but it's, you know, as we ran into last time, it's, it's a pretty heavy bar to get past.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
And then are we going, are we going? And then are we going, are we going to work on refining, you know, alternatives during construction? And are we going to present that to the public at any point? Or are we focused right now on the alternatives and then we'll figure out what to do during construction once we're?
I think this is kind of the first public input. And I think as we go through the process, there's going to be additional public input. As we start to know more detail, we'll be able to have some additional input later on in the process that presents some of that detail.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Grasser. I think we've got to keep the momentum going, so it doesn't get stalled out. Like last time, if we can, you know, get together and figure out the best alternative. But concurrently, we'll be, you know, working on getting money, which wouldn't be finalized until we have the actual plan. Soon as we're shovel-ready, the better, and we'll be able to get out and find the funding in the meantime, hopefully. So. Any further questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Two point four, south end development briefing.
Mr. Phelan.
Mayor Wachowski, members of City Council. I'm joined this evening by Mr. Russell Crery, who's going to have, talk about a couple of slides and show you a video regarding their exciting new development. And Mr. Corman from CPS is assisting Crery Development, so he's here. What we wanted to do today is really demonstrate that there's a need for some further development on our south end. If you were here pre-COVID, even Mr. Webber was excited about a south end development. And this is a similar development, except it's on the other side of Washington is really what we're going to focus on today. I want to just highlight, I asked to go back to see, you know, as we, as a city administration and council, we went into this deferred special and before some of you guys were on City Council. And that went from that year twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen. And you can see in twenty eighteen was really a peak period where we created a lot of platted lots. Mr. Grasser was here with some diagrams where he felt after this deferral period, we probably had three to five years of lots that we created. And so I think we're back where, when we thought we'd be here, knowing that infrastructure that we're going to talk about here is probably a two to three-year process, too. So I think we've been successful. And if you look at, you know, on average, ninety-four single-family lots and twenty-two townhouses, so about a one sixteen. And even last year in twenty twenty, in the midst of a COVID pandemic, we had a hundred and twenty-five single-family and townhouses. So I think we even had a really terrific year of construction and hopefully all this inflation that we have going on right now doesn't quell what we have for development going on right now. Again, here's some multifamily data. And again, back in two thousand fourteen, thirteen and fourteen, Mr. Sandy was on a housing group. He led this group. And one of the things that got identified is that we didn't have enough apartment units. And you can look in thirteen and fourteen where we created a lot of inventory that went down thereafter. But you can see in twenty twenty, I would suspect we've seen a lot of great downtown projects and one on the campus of University of North Dakota with Memorial Village. We're going to start increasing those amounts of multifamily units. I think that's coming next for Grand Forks. And you can see where the vacancy rate is in around a healthy six percent. I think at the same time, UND has already been briefed, they're going to downsize their housing inventory, which is going to make an opportunity for private investment on the apartment side just because they're going to narrow down who, what kind of apartment and dorm living they have on campus. Again, tonight is Crery Development, and they're a humble group. They want to talk about themselves. But I think the difference with what you saw pre-COVID, it was a group, I think it was a Johnson family member that it was their land. It was a development firm or engineering firm called Lowry. So just want to mix and match. That's what you saw here. In this case, it's on the west side of Washington, Crery Development, in a very similar vein as we move forward today. This is the development area, and here is Kings Walk. Here is South Washington. That Lowry Johnson area was this parcel right here. So we're talking on the other side of Washington. I would anticipate at some point, this will be developed land, too. So you'll have a similar conversation that we're going to have today. I just want to point out, we talked a little bit about East Central and rural water and ET zoning. You can see there's already some rural lots that are implanted. So when we get this direction, that's the whole point of extraterritorial zoning. I suspect we're going to have some issues once the city meets these particular lots. And you can see that's coming in our future. Again, here's where this development lands. It's in our Tier One and Tier Two growth tiers. So we're right in the sweet spot of where we want to go next. And you can even see in the gray area where we're pretty darn close to running out of opportunities along Forty-seventh Avenue South and along the Washington Street corridor. You can see where we're at there. And if you drive out on Forty-seventh, you can see we're pretty darn close to running out of time and space. Again, here's the development based on the land use. And you can see in red with some opportunities for commercial development and in purple on the concept land use with some mixed-use development. So these are on our long-term master planning documents. And you'll see from Mr. Crery what they're proposing. And so again, this is within our growth tier. Here are some concepts that I think Mr. Crery is going to talk about. I think in his concepts, I'll probably even make these concepts better than what we anticipate in our long-term planning. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Crery to kind of go over his video and one more thing. And then I'll be back up here to talk about some trunk infrastructure master planning. So, Mr. Crery.
Thank you. Mayor Wachowski, members of the council. I appreciate his time tonight. I get the fun job of just kind of giving you guys the overview of what we're thinking. The city, as Todd had alluded to, has done a lot of great work with infill and downtown and mixed-use development, which is awesome. And it's going to be great for the community, and I'm really excited to see all that. With that being said, one of the fastest-growing segments are twenty-five to forty-year-olds and under ten. So I think that's pretty indicative as well that community neighborhoods are pretty vital to the growth and long-term vision for Grand Forks. So with that being said, Todd kind of showed you where this is. This will be the southwest intersection of Sixty-second and Washington. And what's a little bit different just to start versus maybe other ones that we've done or other people have done is that we're actually concept planning for three hundred acres. So it's a very, very big tract of land. We've been working pretty closely with city staff as well as Mr. Corman. So we appreciate all his work on trying to figure out what would be best for the long-term, you know, for long-term for Grand Forks and not just this piece, but really in total, all the way from the next twenty-year plan for Grand Forks. So with that being said, I think I got to jump, or maybe this is. All right. So here's a little video that Mr. Corman with CPS put together for us. This kind of gives you a good flyover of everything we're thinking. And to give you a good idea, and next slide I'll go over kind of the zoning. But it really is, it leaves the possibility for everybody and everything. So there's going to be a combination of commercial and everything from multifamily, high-density, all the way to townhomes and single-family. And again, the one thing I really want to stress, what really gets us the most excited, and actually this earlier today, we met with the Park District, and they're pretty excited. I don't want to speak for them, but they seem pretty excited to be pretty involved in this process this early on. And, you know, historically speaking, a lot of times requirements, you know, we had to have the stormwater retentions. And a lot of times they're kind of tucked away and developments not really utilized that much. And what we want to do is really plan out this full three hundred acres and utilize the, utilize a storm pond not as a requirement, but really as a benefit and a resource, not just for this development, but for the whole community. And again, so it's a very large body of water. It's not ninety acres like Fargo, but it's a good start. And so what actually our plan is and what our kind of vision is, and we'll work very closely with the Park District and to their degree of involvement as well. But what we really like to do is create this, right here, this retention pond as a main access and a main resource to the whole community. And you'll notice right now the bike path. So there'll be a bike path that'll go all the way around it, both for walking and biking. That'll be almost a two-mile path in the middle of a neighborhood, which is pretty cool. I don't know if you could find that anywhere else. And so that's really cool. And another aspect, too, that we've kind of, you know, ripped off and duplicated maybe from the cities when I used to live there, is the pond. We want to create that as an amenity even in the winter. And so the Park District, I don't want to, again, speak for them, but we've talked about the idea of shoveling, having that actually cleared, and it could be a leisure skating. And so not only can you have a hockey rink or anything like that, but also have it all plowed so you can go on a date and get a hot cocoa. And we're envisioning having, you know, close to the water edge, having fire pits so both summer and winter, people can have a hot chocolate and go on a little date and skate around a little bit and utilize the space. As well as, you know, the sky's the limit. And again, I don't want to speak for the Park District, but they're pretty excited to have future meetings with us and really try to embrace this and use this as an idea to, not only for this neighborhood, but there's also talks of trying to, they would like to see maybe, you know, those three-on-three tournaments that we can have, that like pond hockey-style tournaments out there. Or maybe we create one area that's a bigger area and then snake it back around into the more private neighborhoods. But it's a very large, it's bigger than, you know, this doesn't necessarily do it justice. You should drive out there and see how big of a land we're talking about of planning. To give you a little reference point, right here, it would be a soccer field. So that's a soccer field right there. So that gives you a little bit of an idea on how big these bodies of water can be. So that's kind of just a high-level, what we're currently envisioning. One of the main reasons we are starting this conversation now is that it does take two, three years before you have a permit-ready lot. And by then, personally, we're going to be all the lots. So we're looking for the next phase and looking to get started. And we really want to be really thoughtful and very mindful with all the players, both the city, both the Park District, ourselves, and trying to come up with a good master plan for this whole section of land. With that being said, just going to go really quickly into, back to the PowerPoint. And this will, just to show you guys a little bit of the actual... So the zoning itself, so again, you had Sixty-second to the north, Merrifield to the south, and Washington to the east. And we will actually have pretty much something for everybody. So not only do you have that green park space and utilization of the pond, but also everything from single-family to twin homes, to mid-density townhomes, our three-stuff, as well as high-density apartments. And then a piece of mixed-use off of Merrifield there and then commercial up on that northeast corner. So again, we're really, really excited. The whole purpose of the day, I'll try to keep it quick. You guys got a big meeting. So just to give you guys a heads up, we're working hard with the city, the Park District and CPS on trying to get the ball rolling. And you'll be seeing more stuff coming up in the future. But I want to open up to, if you guys have any high-level questions for us or any feedback that we can incorporate, now would be a great time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Crery. I think we've all been looking forward to, you know, a development like this and some better usage of the storm ponds and parks there. I mean, this has got something for everybody. It's pretty phenomenal. Any questions from council? Mr. Crery? Mr. Sandy?
Mr. Crery, thanks for coming today. Thanks for your service for the city of Grand Forks as well. Do the property owners not want to sell their piece of property to you?
The dog park or the dog?
We haven't inquired, but...
It's got to be cheaper today than it'll be once this development's done. So hopefully, hopefully you can work that out.
Duly noted.
Can you do me a favor? Can you build all the multifamily housing first before you start building the single-family?
Is this, this happens to be in your neck of the woods then, where you'd have to deal with?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we can have that conversation, yeah.
I really appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a great development. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Webber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'll try to keep this short, but I, quick. The multifamily development back in two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen, I think is one of the largely unrecognized successes of the Blue Ribbon Commission led by Council President Sandy. So thanks for that work back then.
And Mike Bergeron.
And Mike Bergeron. You were co-chairs. That's right. Hello, Mike. Yes. Beyond that, very quickly, calling it lunacy or heresy is probably not the best way to introduce a new idea. Not a new idea, but very quickly, that kind of brownfield development, infill development, takes advantage of existing infrastructure, existing fire department, many things. There's a cost to having that ongoing moat of the rail yard through our town. So when we're talking about the cost of the problem at Forty-second and Demers, there's a large cost for just having the rail yard there. So I'd like to, perhaps we could discuss that sometime, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pitch that idea. But this idea is exciting in a lot of ways. I like the mixed-use, the walkability aspects of it. Neighborhoods all over our city should have these kinds of downtown-type amenities to it. So it is exciting. But if we do want to promote greenfield development like this, sometimes referred to as sprawl, but we want growth. Here's my, so all of that leads to this one question for you.
All right.
Why not just improve the overpass at Merrifield Road instead of a new overpass at Forty-seventh?
We'll get to that in the future.
We'll get to that in the future. Not right now? Okay.
It'd be unfair, wouldn't it?
It'd be unfair tonight. Very good. But I planted the seed anyway. We'll discuss that at some time in the future. All right. Thanks. Exciting development.
I think the hope would be Forty-seventh, and then Merrifield would be the next one. I'm thinking he just put bike paths in there to get your blessing on this, but I'm not sure.
We'll do a whole section, too.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Ms. Mock?
I'm pretty hesitant of supporting developing south of Sixty-second. I do, I just want to say that in full transparency. I do think that you have a really comprehensive plan. I'm really impressed by it. So I'm impressed by the planning of it. I'm impressed by utilizing stormwater as a feature instead of a requirement. I've been pushing for that for years, so I think it's great. You know, I think Mr. Phelan will get to more of the trunk infrastructure costs. I think that's where a lot of my concerns lie because that will take a lot of infrastructure. And I have concerns about fire department being able to serve all these different areas and keeping us within growth plans and things like that. So I just want to be open and transparent about that. But I think your planning is very impressive, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Cavami?
Just a quick question. You might not have this, but curious, if you have a estimated value in place, if this is all built, what does this bring to the tax rolls as far as true and full value?
Ooh, that's a good, I don't have that readily available. It would pay for itself long-term, put it that way.
We'd hope so. I was just curious if it's, what that dollar amount is, if you're thinking development-wise, when this is all done, what it would be worth if you were to value that section?
I'll tell you, you'll be seeing a lot more of us. We'll get that for you.
Thank you.
Yep, Ms. Mock?
Do you have an estimate of how long it would take you or how you would approach building all of it? Would you start with like the stormwater features and park features you were talking about? Or like Mr. Sandy was mentioning, the multifamily? Do you know how many years you're planning and kind of staging?
Yeah, a lot of that. It's hard to specifically state just because, one, obviously, it's going to be a lot of demand-driven. But with that being said, I think this will be a little bit different than maybe other ones. And again, there's different possibilities. Trying to be careful on how far I go here, but there's different possibilities for like, for instance, with the Park District, on trying to maybe do more things in advance. And so we write now very early conversations, but just on maybe different avenues of trying to get this stuff done sooner rather than, you know, piecemeal, just working with their budgets, I guess. So maybe to answer that, you know, we'll do it as quickly as we can as demand meets, and we're definitely willing to be creative. And working with all the players involved, both the city, both the Park District, et cetera, are trying to make it as most logical and seamless as possible. But I think step one would be obviously the infrastructure. And kind of that's where our biggest thing is now, is why we're here, is that, you know, we need, you know, before using to build a lot, you know, just with the main infrastructure, will be two-plus years. And by then, like we said, we'll be fresh out of lots, personally speaking. So I think it's something that's phase, you know, phase one is just trying to get it rocking, get it rolling. But yeah, definitely, we'd encourage any meetings with you guys and getting feedback and any relative players to make sure it's as seamless as possible.
Mr. Webber?
Mr. Mayor, like Ms. Mock, you mentioned that this would pay for itself and certainly would create a great deal of new property tax revenue. But I think we both have concerns about the return on investment, the infrastructure costs for the city to create that property tax revenue. Does it pencil out? That would be something that I'd be very interested in seeing.
Yeah, and I think it'd be, just to that point, and that's a very valid point. You know, it's easier to quantify property tax value. It's hard to quantify what the opportunity cost is of not continuing to develop. You know, if we don't, if we don't continue to develop, we don't continue having a draw for families or, not even families or anybody for that matter, a community, then what is that going to happen with, right now, our hardest portion in being involved in other stuff is labor and workforce. If we don't provide a good place for people to live and raise their families, then I think we're having a lot more problems elsewhere. And that's very hard to quantify. So valid point, definitely worth entertaining. But I'd also encourage you to consider the opportunity cost of not... the opportunity cost of not, not considering growth.
Exactly. So a railroad redevelopment could give us so much.
No comment. Not my expertise.
All right, Mr. Vean?
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Crery, I like what you've laid out here. I think it makes good sense. I like your storm holding ponds and trying to take advantage of something larger than all the small, smaller ones that we have. Although I do like infill projects, we have to have, I think, have the right combination of, of growth and infill, and we look at those together. But maybe my question is partially for you, Mayor, and partially for myself, as being on the Land Use Planning Committee, as we grow, where makes the most sense for us to grow? Is it south of 62nd? Is it go west to kind of square off the city? What is the best, and maybe this is something for Mr. Brooks to answer, as we look at the future growth and how we grow, is this the one that makes the most sense? That's just the question I ask, and there may be other options that we want to look to, because if we're going to invest infrastructure funds into this, because we're going to have to, to get the lift stations, the water towers, all of that, is it just to identify if this is the, is the best one for us?
Yeah, and Mr. Vean, I think you make a great point, but the other problem is, the best place to grow is probably the place where the landowners willing to develop it and move forward. And we've got other landowners that are plenty well happy just sitting on it, so I, you know, we're going to have to have a mix, like you said, between infill and greenfield. What we don't want to have is poorly planned greenfield, so having, you know, well thought-out, well-planned greenfield development is about the best we can do, and we've got a developer that's willing to move forward with it. It could be decades before some of the other land gets developed, so we've got an opportunity. I think, like you said, there's an opportunity cost, you know, the city not willing to participate as well, and they're all good points, so some more work needs to be done, but thank you. Is there any other comments? You got a little bit on the truck and trunk infrastructures, Mr. Phelan?
I do, yep. I'll be quick here. To that point, we agree, we want an AN strategy. Obviously, we brought in a lot of infill projects, this is on the greenfield. I just want to highlight kind of where we're at. And to some degree, probably from 1995 to the early 2000s, the city invested a lot of infrastructure in the south end, and we've been reaping some of these benefits. I mean, we talked a lot about the wastewater treatment plant. A lot of activities or investments have been done, and those have been exhausted, and now we're at the next 20 to 30 years, and that's the opportunity we have. So again, here's the interchange, as Mr. Weber did talk about, and again, the interchange is to relieve, the primary reason why they, the DOT and Federal Highway bought off on that is we don't want to inundate on 32nd Avenue South. So that's the reason why this makes sense, and as you go further south, its impact on 32nd Avenue South is significantly reduced. What we're proposing on 32nd Avenue South is to maintain the lane width the way we have it, and not to add more. In lieu of that, we're going to take some pressure off and put it down there on 47th. I want to highlight, here's the south end drainway, and the south end drainway was put in between 1995 and 2000, and that was really sped up after the flood of 1997, but that's allowed all the development that has currently occurred between 32nd and 47th. If that hadn't occurred, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we would not have developed all this property here over the last 20-plus years. So that's incredibly important as we move forward. Here's the Crary development. And now the harder part is to do what our predecessors did, you know, 20 to 25 years ago, is how are we going to develop from 62nd to Merrifield and from Belmont? And as you recall, we do have some green spaces, but we're not quite sure on the wet side of the levee if we should develop this parcel right here. And so we really are up against, on 32nd, on both, on the east and west side of Washington, so that's kind of where we're at, with a willing landowner moving forward. Again, after the flood too, the city put in a lot of wastewater pump stations, so if you look at this, these pump stations, there's one located here near Remley Road or where the elementary school is. There's one right out here, adjacent to the golf course. This property owner has chosen, chosen not to develop, and I suspect once we get 47th Avenue, this will start filling in too. So some of it's kind of where we develop. And if you look at this area over here, this is really filled in with some of those investments that were made post-97. So I'm pointing out pump stations that were constructed between 1998 and 2004, and so all, all that investment that went in with those four pump stations is now pretty much filled in, except for this one area, as you look west, moving forward.
Mr. Phelan, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think that goes to Mr. Vean's point about putting in infrastructure and the mayor's response. Future council members put in a lift station, trying to spur development, and that sat there for years and years. And so having developers that are eager participants, that want to develop in a way that we want them to develop, is very important for us. I think that is a perfect example of, of taking advantage of the opportunity that's in front of us.
Yep. And I think you can look at developers right here, this developer, Guy Uselinger, is going to jump 47th. You know, depending on what we do with 47th Avenue and Interchange, whether it's 49th or 47th. And I think part with the city, mayor and city council, you could really do on those landowners that, you know, are satisfied maybe right now with what they're doing, just farming, maybe it's engaging with those landowners to see how can we do to spur them and become part of development. I would say this has been the most underutilized pump station, you know, after the flood, but you look at all the development, it's really the exception to the rule is what this map really shows you. We would plan in Grand Forks, because we're flat, we put the pump station in the center of the section, and when you put it in the center of the section, you can serve the whole section. So we're proposing this half-section right now with Crary development, but that would serve this entire area right here as part of the service area. This is a stormwater, so we talked about how are we going to master plan on the storm? Again, our predecessors have, have already allowed stormwater. We're going to have to do something similar to, or something equivalent on the stormwater front that was done, you know, 20-plus years ago in this area, to serve this area from a stormwater master plan perspective. The other thing, as, as Mr. Goss is going to talk about east center on the rural water, really, we have, we've identified our service area, post that is really our flood protection limit, so the city at Grand Forks' service limit goes to Merrifield and then to I-29, and obviously, our diversion is a few miles west too that we can serve. So really, this identifies where we are going to serve. The city at Grand Forks has determined that this would be more rural, and so when you look Belmont Road heading east, we've, we've ceded that to rural water entities, and that's been kind of our service line area that's been defined. So really, the next steps, and to answer a lot of the questions, so really, a lot of pressures on the city is, do we want to move forward? The mayor and the city administration, working with the developer, we think the answer is yes. To do that, we need to start planning the sanitary lift station in Forsman. That's going to be a significant investment for the city of Grand Forks, probably, not two and a half to $3 million investment. Again, I talked about some funding opportunities we have to help fund some of this infrastructure. We're going to have to do a stormwater master plan in that area and do some, and again, we have some state programs I think that can help fund some of these activities. And then go through the planning and zoning and annexation and infrastructure construction. The developer will do what they need to do, and there'll probably be some questions about return on investment. So really, this was the first kind of review of this, knowing that over the next few months, they want to get moving forward, and we wanted to get, let you see it first, before planning and zoning and all the other things that we, so we don't bring in projects à la carte to you without seeing the big picture. Again, Mr. Crery talked about the timeframe. You know, if we started today where we are today, we're looking at the first lot, building permit, and they're saying September 4th of 2023, so that's, that's a little while from now to almost over two-plus years, and so there's a lot of work to be done, just studying the best solutions, and then, once you study, how do you design and construct and build and finance all those opportunities? So the great thing about the south end drainway, as I was public works director, working with Marin and Canny, the first 10 years was a bit of a slot because it's a future assessment area. But I'll just tell you, from 2010 to 20, it's really served us well and really turned the corner on that, but it was a challenge. But once it kind of got rolling there, and I think something similar, it's going to be a challenge for the first five to 10 years on financing some of these, but 10 years forward, I think, it really turns the corner, you start to move forward. So with that, that's kind of a highlight. I would anticipate we would bring more in-depth briefings to you with more details, starting at near-term, I would say probably in July, Mr. Sandy, coming back to the community hall with more details. But want to just give you a first snapshot of where we're looking at first in development. Mayor, Bocinski?
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Vean's got...
Yeah, one other quick question, and I like what you said, Mayor, about the ability of having somebody who wants to develop, that's probably pretty critical. I think a couple of quick things. You know, naturally, Merrifield is probably our southerly boundary for the city. If we do go south of that, of course, we're outside the flood protection. We can continue to go west. That's years and years down the road that we will probably need to continue to, to think about that. My, one question is, is this whole area being developed by Crary? Are there other developers that will have opportunity to also develop properties, again, with, with availability of infrastructure and lift stations as we go down the road? I know we talked about the one that's there that's not being underutilized, so it seems like we've got growth there also, is that right?
Mayor Bocinski and City Councilmember Vean, I think we have willing developers south of 62nd, going east and going west. And I think the point is, somebody's got to lead, and I think the Crarys are willing to develop, partly because they need to, partly because they're willing to take a chance. And a lot of folks lead from behind, so I think we need a leader. We're, I'm thankful that the next generation Crarys between Russell and Adam are here and wanting to move forward. And I think this conversation, the reason why we sometimes, it spurs conversations among the other developers on what they ought to do, or be thinking about doing, and how can we partner with them? Because certainly, the other half of the section is owned by somebody else, and we want to, we want to engage them as part of the master planning too.
Yeah, they'll definitely be taking the load to getting that, that pump station in, and then the, you know, the western half, the other 320 acres, a little bit of it's cut off, but that'd be available and much quicker to build out. Mr. Sandy?
Mr. Phelan, I know you probably don't have a solid answer on this, and if today is too early to ask the question, that's okay, but has anyone given any thought to what the annexation plan would be for this property?
Mayor Bocinski and Council President Sandy, that's a very good question. I think, you know, when you look at what we're trying to do in this area, I dare say, maybe we want to take a look at how we want to annex it, how do we put in infrastructure, how do we finance it? What do we put on the developer? What do we hold ourselves? So I think this bigger development is going to also, not only get planning and zoning and return, but how do we finance it? And maybe have, we may have to look at our policies if we're going to go a little bit bigger. And I think it would also help other developers, so when we look at 40, the 47th Avenue interchange, and we're going to put in some major infrastructure to take a look at that. And I forgot to mention the transportation. I mean, we need to finish the last mile of Columbia Road, the last mile of Washington, and then 62nd, so those are three miles of paving that we need to do as part of this too. So there's a lot of infrastructure investments on our part and what's a private developer. So I think it's going to spur a lot of conversations, Mr. Sandy, about how do we finance all this?
Can I, can I ask one more question? Can you go back to that previous image? That, somebody, so we've already put significant amount of infrastructure to the west of Columbia Road. In what sort of shape is that lift station? Is it still like new?
I would say with wastewater pump stations, we always have to upgrade the electronics and the drives, just because they get outdated and you can't have parts. But it's been underutilized, obviously, and helps serve, you know, some of the stuff regarding over in the King's Walk area, but it's been significantly underused. I think it'll really start getting used as we move forward with 47th Avenue and the interchange. This whole area is going to, is really going to get spurred with development.
But we've essentially already put in all the infrastructure that we're now talking about putting in for the new development that the Crarys are talking about bringing, correct? There's significant investment already made here. Reason I asked about our annexation plan is perhaps we should look at annexing part of this property and encourage them to swapping land with the Crarys and save us some money upfront today, where we don't have to put in a new lift station in another area of town that the rest of it may be underutilized as well. Perhaps that's rhetorical, but I don't know, and I don't know if the Crarys have had that conversation with, I don't, I can't remember who, if that's Guy or...
I think, Mr. Uselinger, I think he's on the north half, and I think the abatements are on the south.
At a perfect world, they just swap land, and the Crarys could be ready to go a lot faster with a whole bunch of infrastructure that's already there. The city can postpone having to put in all this infrastructure in the next year and a half, and, and then we can continue to better plan, but that's just an idea.
Yeah, at least that northwest corner, quarter there, it's going to probably take some time because of, you know, where the interchange ends up going is the issue there, but the other three quarters would probably be, you know, more ready to go.
Anyway, just an idea. Thank you.
In a perfect world, huh? Any other further questions for Mr. Phelan? Mr. Weber?
Yeah, short of a perfect world, it seems like our most likely fourth bridge is going to be Merrifield Road. And so where we already have an overpass there, and I don't know that it's, I'm guessing that it would be much cheaper to add on ramps, off ramps to an existing overpass than to have to build a whole new overpass. And if there's this kind of development going on there, then you create kind of a bypass for the city by connecting that Merrifield overpass to a Merrifield Bridge, which would also serve ag in this area, I think would, so just, I don't even know if that was a question, but if we can pull off the land swap, let's do that. But short of that happening, let's consider this as well.
Mayor Bocinski and Councilmember, where I think it's still important for us to determine on the 47th Avenue interchange, because a lot of development's being held up. If you look along this 47th Avenue corridor, is it going to have an interchange, or is it not going to have an interchange? Are we going to make improvements to 32nd Avenue South, or we're just going, are we going to add lanes? We've kind of made some determinations at 47th Avenue South, it solves our 32nd Avenue South issue. We've even had the North Dakota DOT say that's, that's right. We don't want our, our interchange on 32nd Avenue starting back up there, so that's the best long-term solution. I, I think of the bridge on, it's the, you know, farm-to-industry kind of road, and I think that's going to serve that. 47th Avenue South will not be the bridge corridor, and I don't think that neighborhood really wants that anyway, but it really does relieve 32nd. So our, our number one priority for the interchange is to relieve 32nd Avenue South, and by putting that in, it avoids a lot of other construction activity that we have to do on 32nd Avenue South.
Okay, rather than a neither-or, the discussion of the Merrifield Bridge, I've never heard it discussed in conjunction with adding on ramps, off ramps to the Merrifield overpass. Is there a reason we've never had that discussion?
Mr. Grassford?
I think we've had, I know I've had that discussion.
I've had that discussion. I'm under the assumption that at some point that that will happen.
Excellent.
Absolutely.
I think it's, that'd be crucial.
So I think, I think we've said for the city of Grand Forks, maybe informally, the Merrifield Bridge with, tied in with the, you know, adding to the overpass is probably our number one priority. And again, Mr. Kavami, he's on the intercity bridge, but I, I'm sure the, the more industrial bridge is going to play into what our priorities are.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phelan. Any further questions, or feel free to follow up? Mr. Wagle, you haven't said anything, we'll give you a chance.
I appreciate that. We've talked a little bit about funding and the other chunk of property, if the land swap were to go through. You asked me about halfway through this whole thing, I'll be honest, but we talk about funding, the state legislature's came out with programs for us to get this funding done at low interest rates, correct? There's no guarantee that those programs are going to be here two years from now, five years from now, or 10 years from now, when we are at a point that we want to develop this. So would it be smarter for us to take, take the opportunity, spend the money now, knowing the cost is only going to go up, and have both sets of property ready to develop versus just picking one? And maybe that's not a question, but just a comment.
Mr. Phelan, you want to take that? They certainly bumped up the 15 million up to 40 million, so there's a $25 million bucket. Lift stations, is that around about 4 million? Is that where we're at, granted more infrastructure?
About 3 million, yeah.
3 million? Okay.
Obviously, it's ineligible use. So I think we we have this whole area. It's all going to get developed. And I think just how do we do it most strategically? Eventually, that pump station that's kind of in that vacant area, that's going to get that's going to get filled in over the next 20, 30 years. It's just a matter of time.
And I think on the CIP, we have a lift station already planned for east of Washington on that other. So it's probably, you know, shifting that over to this one if it comes sooner and then adding further out, you know, in the CIP, another plan for the next pump station to the east of Washington. Ms. Mock, let's, we'll finish up with that. Ms. Mock.
So I guess something that would be nice to get maybe with the land use plan or something of that nature is a comprehensive plan for how we're going to balance all of the new development and redevelopment. Because, you know, we have businesses closing at 32nd or at Columbia Mall. So we've got areas to redevelop as well as new areas. Because this will get filled in. That's not really the question. It's the timing and when we pay for all this trunk infrastructure. Because once we put it in, we also have to maintain it. So I guess to me, that's part of, you know, putting a $3 million lift station is has great value and probably will happen. But once we put it in, we also have to maintain it going forward. So we want to make sure the timing is correct for the city as well. And I guess I just would like to see that we're balancing all of redevelopment areas and taking advantage of those opportunities while planning for the greenfield development because that's all part of it. So that might be something to do with the land use plan since that planning is going on as well. And that may make everybody feel like we're comprehensively planning.
Mayor Bochensky and Council Vice President Mock, just so everyone is sure, I think more, most of our time is spent with infill development. Just so I think a minor part of our time has been spent with greenfields. So if you look at Grand Cities Mall, Columbia Mall, U N D Downtown, and various other areas, we spend more time with those, trying to get them close to the finish line. Just so I would say 80% of our time is spent with infill development and maybe 20% with greenfield development, just so everyone knows where our priorities are.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phelan.
2.5 fiscal year 2022 salary plan and benefits and budget briefing.
All right, I just got a short briefing first, and we'll get into it, Ms. Dorstad. It's nice to be able to bring this forward about a month or six weeks earlier than we did last year. I wanted to take a look quick back at the 2021 budget. So far, we've got a little over, well, five months now into it, and things are looking good. Revenue and building permits are outperforming expectations. And early projections, if things hold out the way they're projected, we were optimistic that we will probably in the general fund alone exceed by roughly 1-plus million, really due to the conservative thoughtful budgeting last year. So that's great. I think one of the priorities that I want to have if we do have extra funding is the closed pension pension, the defined benefit pension plan. I can never get that off my tongue. That's really a drain on cash flow every year at about 3.5 million for the next 14 years. And the more money we could put on the front end to help fund that, the better off we'll be, both as a pension but also in the long run. So that would be something later in the year to look at if we have additional funds. Looking at this year on the salary and benefits side, last year, I really want to thank city employees, you know, accepting that $1,000 raise instead of the normal market raise was tough. And there was no promise that this year we were going to be able to get back to it. I just told everyone that when it's the times prudent, we'll be able to get back to market level. And here we are just a year later, and we're able to do that. So that's pretty exciting. And all this while maintaining flat on the on the property tax. So I think that's pretty exciting. And as we look forward, we've got about 11.4 worth of ARPA funds coming. So we've had some early conversations with the finance department. I also had mentioned to the Vice President and the President of the Council, we've got some real opportunities there to possibly fund, at least partially fund, the wastewater treatment plant to remove some of the utility increase burden, but also some one-time payments that we can reimburse of CARES funding that'll free up some money for more of the quality life and economic development plays. So there'll be a kind of a plan coming forward for everyone to look at. And I think it's a it's a great start to have those pegged somewhere that can fill an immediate need and reduce the burden on people's wallets. So with that, Ms. Dorstad, please take it away.
All right, thank you, Mayor Bochensky. Members of the City Council, as Mayor Bochensky stated, tonight, we want to give you a glimpse at how things are performing compared to budget. Take a look at the 2022 budget process and some preliminary numbers. We've set the agenda to start by giving you an update first quarter performance for current year 2021 budget actual. Then I'm going to turn it over to Tangi to hit the highlights of the 2022 salary plan and benefit update. And then I'm going to come back and update you with some key growth indicators that we're looking at through the in the processes used in putting together some preliminary numbers for the 2022 budget, as well as some levy outlook and and rate rate increase outlooks. But finally, and we'll just wrap up with what's to come with your 2022 budget timeline. So then, beginning with budget performance in 2021, for the first quarter, you have included in your information, you should find a handout A that gives you a memo along with a one-page summary snapshot of the general fund and major utility funds. Overall, in the general fund, things are looking pretty good, as Mayor Bochensky stated. Revenue at 55% of budget with expenses at 23% of budget at this first quarter mark. Makes sense that revenue is going to be higher than 25% at this point in the year as the primary funding source of the general fund is your property tax, which we booked that receivable at the beginning of the year. Sales tax, as you've been noticing in your monthly reports, is doing well, and we are at 32% of budget through the first quarter with regards to sales tax. We had brought this budget down significantly in 2021 as there were so many unknowns when putting together this budget. I do believe, as Mayor Bochensky referred to, that we will do much better than budget in this area. We're currently up 1.74% on a 12-month rolling average and 2.47% up on a cash basis when comparing collections January through May 2021 as compared to 2020. Another area that we watch closely is state aid. Where state aid is derived is a portion of the state sales taxes shared with municipalities. We had also significantly decreased that budget in 2021 as was projected by the state. It is down about 9.6% as compared to first quarter 2020, but we are at 30% of budget in this area. Building permit revenue has been coming in strong. At first quarter mark, it was 12% of budget. Activity has picked up in April, May. So currently, when I look at that area, we are at 37% of budget. Franchise fees overall, 29% of budget, with cable being at 24% at the first quarter mark, nodak at 27%, and Excel at 32% of budget. As stated on the general fund expense side, we're 23% in total at the first quarter mark with wages being at 24% and benefits at 19% of budget. Benefits are going to be a little bit less than 25% just because we will have that lump sum defined benefit pension payment that would come out in the second quarter. Really, the only outlier when you look at your handout is capital, as we did amend to use some CARES funds for cost of fire and police radios. So two primary sources of revenue are state aid and highway user or gas tax. When you look at the first quarter performance here in comparison to 2019 and 2020 first quarters, you can see that we did take a little dip this year in comparison to the first quarters in the previous two years in these areas. State aid collections, like I said, is a part, a portion of the state sales tax. We get this on a quarterly basis. When I look back at 2020, that first quarter state aid had come in very well, started out very strong. 2021's first quarter was down roughly 9.6% as compared to last year's first quarter. When looking back to 2019, we're down about 6%. When looking at gas tax, the first quarter 2021 is down about 6% as compared to 2020 first quarter, but about 3.25% when we look back to 2019. But in a more recent look, when I do look at this gas tax, the last two most recent months of collections are slightly higher than the same two months a year ago. So it looks to be rebounding a bit. You would already have most of your sales tax information from those monthly sales tax reports and as we previously referred to. But just to review, sales tax is performing better than expectations through this COVID pandemic than we had thought when we were looking at this a year ago. This slide just gives you an annual look at those comparables from 2019, 2020, and now 2021. So you can see it's coming in very, very strong. I'm going to turn it over to Tangia this time to go through some salary information, and then I'll come back and give you a little more of a budget briefing.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky, Council President Sandy, and members of the council. First off, I'd like to just express how happy we are to be presenting the salary plan as part of this year's budget. And big thank yous go out to our city administrator, Mayor Bochensky, and all of our department heads for working through the salary plan with our department. And special thanks to Gretchen Getter, who, from my department, who has been entering in data for the last three months. So I'll refresh everybody's memory by letting you know that the salary plan was created in 2001 and then implemented in 2002 and had the basic guiding principles of being competitive, meaning we're in the running for top talent, we're equitable, we pay similar positions, similar salary, and we're flexible. We have the ability to adapt and tailor our salary plan to the city's needs by adding and deleting positions, by adjusting linkages, and by reclassifying positions. Most importantly, our salary plan, though, has to be able to recruit, retain, and motivate employees. The first piece of our salary plan is always our overall market increase percentage. This is calculated by using our comparator cities and getting their salary increases, their step increases, COLA increases, any performance or any other wage increases to for that particular entity and averaging out all our comparative cities. And then we multiply that by our general fund based base salary of wages. This is the portion of the salary plan that the council approves with the budget. And then the second piece of our plan is the individual benchmark position plans and how the overall market increases paid out. Once market movement is accounted for, the remainder is used to fund performance increases. Since it has been a year without a salary plan presentation, I'll refresh everyone's memory with the changes that were made for 2020's salary plan, which is the current plan in place now. In order to improve our plan back in 2020, we determined we needed reliable, repeatable data from comparator entities that were better matched for the city of Grand Forks and consistently responsive to our salary surveys. So we worked with our salary plan consultant, Matt Weatherly, from Public Sector Personnel Consultants, and identified a list of 12 full-service cities that were comparable in size, population, and region to the city of Grand Forks. And we implemented those 12 cities to determine market data for the 2020 salary plan. At this point in the process of budgeting, we had already defined the overall market percentage using our 21 city comparators that were originally designated with our salary plan. But moving forward into 2020 and 2021 and beyond, we had indicated it was our intention to utilize those same 12 full-service cities for both the overall salary increase percentage as well as the benchmark market data. So during our 2020 budgeting process, City Council President Sandy had suggested that we also utilize those same 12 city comparators for elected positions, which you will see that we did incorporate into the 2022 salary plan. So fast forward to 2020, and during the 2021 budgeting processes process, like Mayor Bochensky has already stated, we did forego the annual salary plan and instead implemented the $1,000 increase per employee or allow eligible employees to join the Endy Pur's public safety plan. The market and data ranges adopted for 2020, salary plan remained in place for 2021. So additional updates that we have incorporated for 2022 salary plan is the minimum salary increase of $250. This is for employees in positions that did not see any market movement, i.e., range changes for 2022. This equated to 49 general fund positions and 80, or excuse me, employees and 85 employees overall. Another key update is the breakout of performance dollars by department. This plan is currently structured to measure performance scores against across the entire city. The challenge with performance scores is getting all departments to rate the exact same. We typically have some departments that would rate marginally higher and some departments that would rate marginally lower. And instead of trying to keep training everyone to rate the correct way, we have determined we can break out the proportionate amount of performance dollars per department, and the ratings will only draw from that set amount of performance dollars. It's just a little more administrative work on HR's end. So that will be a positive change. And the health insurance for elected officials. Late in 2020, it was brought forward by city administration to the council to recommend to offer health insurance for elected officials as a way to entice a greater number of people to run for elected office. And it was, at that time, it was encouraged by the council to bring it back with the 2022 budget, along with the information gathered from our 12 comparator cities. So we have done that, and the information is provided to you along with the draft 2022 salary and benefit plan documentation that is attached to tonight's agenda. And finally, like I alluded to before, we have utilized our 12 comparator cities for the city council and mayor salaries for 2022. And these are our survey cities. We have four North Dakota cities, two South Dakota cities, and six Minnesota cities that are, we have deemed comparable to the city of Grand Forks. And we are using those for our overall salary plan increase as well as the benchmark market data. This slide illustrates our city, survey cities, what their reported increase were for 2022, projected, or actual 2021 increases that are aged to 2022. As you can see, Grand Forks is at the far right in green, indicating a 3.06% increase. So this is the 10-year look back of council-approved yearly percentage increases. 2022, as I mentioned, the increase, proposed increase is 3.06%. And if you look at last year, it was a little different, as we talked about. But 2021, that $1,000 increase per employee equated to about a 1.58% increase. But I also added in the dollars to implement the North Dakota Public Safety Retirement Plan in there. So that total was $447,500. So how that breaks out, as far as for the the general fund, that overall 3.06% is 562,888 in market adjustments, which makes up about 67% and affects 274 employees in 71 different positions in the general fund. The mayor has, mayor and finance department and city administrator and the team has also allowed $129,000 added into the salary plan for positions falling below market minimums. And then $12,250 for that $250 minimum salary increase that we talked about before. The average market increase for 2022 for employees receiving a market increase is 97 cents per hour. If the employee gets the $250 increase as they have no market movement, that equates to 12 cents per hour. This is just a pie chart indicating that same breakdown. So all of our formulas driving the salary plan are based off the general fund. And you can see we have, like I talked about, about 60, about 2/3 in market this year and about 1/3 in performance for the general fund. And you can see we extrapolate those formulas into across all funds, and the percentage is just about mere, just one percentage less for market movement for across all funds, 2% for that minimum salary increase, and 31% for performance increases, equating to just over $1.1 million across all funds. So the 10-year review, this is a look at our market and performance dollar breakout over the last, since 2013. Once again, 2021 is the outlier. It doesn't reflect market or performance. It is strictly that flat increase of $1,000 in the public safety plan implementation. As you can see, the blue line indicates market movements, which was very high in 2020, as well as again in 2022, which we would have anticipated. well as, again, in 2022, which we would have anticipated by not adjusting the market in any way in 2021. At this point, I just want to reference the salary plan draft that is available to you attached to tonight's agenda. The draft contains numerous other charts and graphs that will assist you in more thoroughly visualizing the salary plan and how it works. And the document contains an overview of the plan as well as summary of all I've discussed this evening. It contains the mayor and city council survey data on page 43 for your positions. And note that the survey numbers for current salary for city council for 2022 came in below current salary. However, how we operate with those type of occurrences is we will just, the city council member salaries will just freeze until there is a range or an increase indicated. In addition to the salary plan data, we also like to provide an overview of which promotions and positions are added into the budget. For 2022, it was extremely important that the mayor and administrative team, to the mayor and the city administrative team, that the salary plan be implemented in full and the market be up to date so the city stays competitive. And as such, there was only eight promotions and two additional positions, as indicated on the slide, that were added to the general fund. And for non-general fund positions, there were five promotions added, but no additional positions for 2022. And finally, I'd like to draw your attention to the data collected regarding health insurance benefits for elected officials. This can be found on the Appendix B on your 2022 Salary Plan Report, which is the very last page of that attachment. It's the city's goal to increase the number of candidates to run for elected public office, such as city council, mayor, and municipal judge. We feel that by offering health insurance contributions, we may increase our candidate pool, potentially by incentivizing private business owners and entrepreneurs and the like. The survey information we did receive indicates that there is no set standard for whether or not a city provides benefits. For example, Sioux Falls, Rapid City, and Duluth all have full-time mayors and offer full-time benefits for those elected officials. Sioux Falls, Rapid City, and Duluth, I'm sorry, Bismarck, Minot, West Fargo, and Duluth offer no additional benefits to elected official. The city of Fargo and the city of Burnsville both allow their, their mayor and their council or commission members' participation in employee benefits with employer contributions. And Morehead and Rochester allow elected officials to participate but do not provide an employer match for those benefits. So those survey entities indicate a mixed result. There's now no right or no wrong. If the city council does determine that the city of Grand Forks will offer health insurance benefits for elected officials, we would recommend that the coverage provided to elected officials be, mirror our current employee benefits, that's 75% employer, 25% employee. We would prefer, if we could rewrite our current Blue Cross Blue Shield contract, to include those elected officials if they so elect. Or if we cannot rewrite our Blue Cross Blue Shield North Dakota contract, we would set up a reimbursement structure. And as far as for the 2022 budget, we did set aside a line item budget for $45,000 for 2022, if the city council passes that. So those are all my slides for today, but before I hand it back over to Mreen, to complete the mayor's budget preview, I'd just like to remind city council members that I'm available for questions in person, via phone, email. We have lots of time before the presentation on July 19th, so please feel free to email your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dorstad.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Tangi. Previous slides that we went through before Tangi was at the podium here were first quarter comparable information. The next few slides that I will go through with you take more of an annual look in, that we use in setting the budgets for 2022. So in looking at growth indicators and putting budgets together, one of our most impactful revenue streams that we look at, but also can be one of our most volatile streams, is sales tax. This will show you just a graphic looking at 2019 and 2020 actual. Collections look very similar, looking back when we put together the 2021 budget. Like I said, there are many unknowns, so we budgeted very conservatively in this area with a significant decrease, as you can see. Looking ahead to 2022, we have budgeted flat with 2020 actual and will continue to monitor this. This slide just shows you how this breaks out also between funds, as you can see, between the general fund, economic development fund, street infrastructure fund, the street water and the Alara Center, and also the use tax. And looking at state aid, as you can see, this bar chart comparing years 2019, 2020 actual, as well as the 2021 budget, as compared to where we are looking at setting the '22 budget. The state aid that we receive, like I said, comes from a portion of the state sales tax that gets shared with municipalities. This is based on, also on the most recent census data. So when, we had brought this budget down significantly in 2021 due to the unknowns of the pandemic. In the end, 2020 did come in less than 2019, but we still came in better than, than we had once projected. We do expect to make budget in, in 2021 in this area. I believe we'll do better than budget. My expectation, what we have for 2022 at this point is that we have set this around actual collections in 2020. We do still wait for guidance in this area from the state, but for now, our preliminary numbers do include an amount that's equivalent with last year's collections. Like I said, the census data will also impact the formula that gets calculated into state aid. And unfortunately, this information, I do not believe, will become available in time for preliminary approval of the budget. And taking a look at highway user, the gas tax collections, this had seen a decline since 2019, but as stated earlier, this has begun to rebound. The last couple months of collections are higher than last year. We'll continue to monitor this revenue stream. For now, we are looking at setting the budget equivalent with 2020 actual, and we wait for further guidance on budget levels here. I looked at franchise fees and, and building permits as we put together this budget. We have seen a trend to decline in our cable franchise fee collections as other opportunities arise for, for people's viewing experience. We do expect this trend to continue. We have budgeted a 10% decrease for this area. Our XL gas and electric franchise fee is tracking very close to budget, and we are keeping that level with what we had budgeted in '21. The NODAC electric franchise fee is the one that's had most recent discussion and the changes that were made. And with the impacts of data centers and to include core scientific, we do have an increase in that budget from $390,000 to $650,000. So that's a significant impact to our general fund. Then finally, in looking at building permits, we'll continue to monitor this as, as inflation is expected, and unsure of its impacts, but what we have done here in the area of building permits and related building permits and licenses is to budget a five-year average. Included in your handout that I'm going to refer some information to is your handout B that will give you a mill levy comparison. We do have a preliminary mill reduction figured into this budget at this, at this time. It would reduce 0.88 mils. What this comes to is this would be the equivalent amount in order to have an increase in dollar amount from growth, but nothing in total from revaluation. So what this does in, in effect, is whole property taxes flat on the average. The, about 1.5% comes from growth. If you look at your handout, which is referred to as handout B, you'll see the areas of the budgets that are supported by property tax that are within the city's umbrella. You'll get more detail in these budgets as we present the budget in July, but the mill reductions are coming in the areas of the general fund, public building fund, our city special assessment fund, and then slight amounts from the insurance reserve fund, library, and airport. In the end, then, the number of mils is estimated to go from the current 97.87 mils down to So as this budget is a preview, these slides still reflect a work in progress as we look to present on July 19th. These numbers are, as I just will remind you, are all preliminary. When looking at the general fund expense in total, we broke those down into some pie charts for you, both by category and by function. As you can see, wages and benefits encompass 79% of your total expenses in the general fund, and roughly 53% of the general fund is in the category of public safety. There is a handout entitled handout C, and this will give you a further breakout of the revenue expense by category. We've given you on that handout a two-year comparison look as 2021 was really an anomaly, and it was a budget that was at a level that can't be sustained. When looking at a two-year time period, then it would average out to 2.38% per year if you were to compare 2020 to 2022. So as you look to your handout, you'll see where the areas of increases come from. And as stated earlier, we're bringing sales tax and state aid budgets back to 2020 actuals, which is a significant increase to the budget. And on the expense side, we are funding the salary plan, as Tangi went through with you, as we had not funded it in 2021. This budget also builds back approximately half of the education that had been reduced as part of the 2021 budget, and also gets us back on track with NEDA capital and capital reserves to a healthier level. One of the mayor's priority was really to fund that salary plan and probably support public safety in funding our capital and capital reserves. So as stated on the previous slide, these rates and all information is still preliminary, but here are the preliminary estimates as we continue to work through the detail of these utility budgets. We look to rate increases in the areas of wastewater and stormwater flood protection greenway fees, but we do not estimate rate increases in other areas to include sanitation, water, or mosquito. So when we turn to the next slide, what this means in terms of dollars for the average utility bill for a 6,000-gallon residential user, the increase would average 1.23% or $1.19 a month. And then finally, not getting into a lot of detail on this, I know Mayor Bochinsky spoke of these funds a bit at, at the introduction, but CARES and ARPA funds and recommendations will all come to you in more detail with the 2022 budget. But as we worked through the guidelines and eligible uses, we did want to just give you a summary. As a reminder, in 2020, we did draw down CARES funds. That was, the dollar amount received was based on our 2020 law enforcement payroll expense. Of that $2.6 million was spent in 2020, with $4.3 million intended to still be used. And we've incorporated as part of the 2022 budget, $365,000 of these funds to be used for police capital replacement, to get these to a healthy reserve amount. We did just receive the first half installment of the American Rescue Plan dollars last week. The money came into our account in the amount of roughly $5.7 million. We expect the second half allocation to come in a year from now. We are combing through all those eligible uses, 150-page document, but what is clear, and, and the mayor did speak to this a bit, is utility infrastructure is a major area that we're looking at, that we can invest some of these funds and help offset some of those wastewater expenses, capital expenses, and in a way doing so that would help rate pairs across both residential and, and business. So as we look ahead, you have, you should have received already a meeting invite for June 30th, joint meeting with the Alara Center Commission that we will, we hold out there at the Alara Center. We plan to still present the budget in its entirety on July 19th as we work through the remainder of these budgets and details. We'll also be adding a meeting the week of July 26th to meet with the city of East Grand Forks and the Wastewater Interconnect Advisory Committee. Preliminary approval is slated for the meeting August 2nd and with final approval on September 7th. This should allow time for additional meetings if needed. I have also included the budget timeline that is referred to as handout D for your reference. The only addition from the last time you had received this timeline is that wastewater interconnect meeting. Tangi, Todd, the mayor, and I are all available for your questions now or later. My door is always open. Give me a call, email me, or if you have any questions tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Dorstad. And as preliminary, if we do have some questions, we'll try to keep it somewhat short tonight, and we can move on with the agenda. So if anybody has anything or can wait for follow-up in the next few weeks, but... Mr. Sandy? I was, I was looking at you when I was saying that, so...
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple quick comments and a few questions, mostly from Ms. Bovette. The, the performance dollars per department, how are you, how are you figuring that out? You said that you used to do it a different way. Now we're allocating dollars per department because they're not grading people the same way. How, is it by, based upon the total salaries as a percentage of the, of the total?
There you go.
Yep, okay.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Sounds good. The, regarding the health insurance, how do you get to $45,000 for the anticipated health insurance cost?
It was, it was just based on a guess. So it's, it allows for a certain, a certain number of family plans and a certain number of single plans.
Okay.
May or may not be utilized.
There's one of the bullets in the presentation that said to offer it as an option for those not covered by their employers. How do you, how do you, how do you only offer it to a certain group of people and not all
Well, and you, and it would depend on how it was set up, but if you are currently covered through your employer...
We can offer a benefit to Kyle, for example, but not Jeannie?
Yeah, we do that, yep, we can. We can offer a benefit, but if you are covered, you may not choose to accept that benefit.
No, I understand that. I just, I didn't think that we could treat Brett or Jeannie any differently than me and Danny.
No, we would offer the benefit, but likely, likely there wouldn't be as many people that would take it. Most people who are employed as elected officials that we've had carry insurance through another provider.
No, I understand. I'm just going based upon the bullet that you had, is only offered as an option to people not covered under their own, by their employer. So again, I'm, are we gonna, is the plan to offer it to everyone, or is the plan to only offer it to a few?
I would say we'd offer it to anybody that would be needing health insurance.
That, that's all I was trying to, trying to understand.
Just like employees, yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, great. Because, for example, the insurance here might be better than the crummy insurance that...
Icon.
Somebody else, somebody else provides, right? It certainly is a possibility, right? One other comment related to the, going to, from our 21 cities down to 12. I don't recall that we had made the policy decision to make that change, which is part of why I sent several emails over the last couple days. That discussion was July 13th, 2020, at the Committee of the Whole. I suggest people should go back and watch the video and refresh your memories. I haven't actually watched it myself, so I'm, I'm looking forward to refreshing my own memory of what I said last year, but I don't recall us saying as a policy, we were definitely going to make that change. My thought was... My thought was, we were going to consider it, bring it back and consider it, and make the comparison, or even just look at the data. So my thought process was, we were going to be seeing a comparison of, here's what the 12 show, here's what the 21 show. It makes sense to either continue doing what we've been doing or make the change, because I think that the, going to a salary survey of larger cities disproportionately benefits the people that make more money within the city, because people in the, I believe, just based upon what I've seen, seen and witnessed, is your department heads, for example, are going to make much more money in Fargo and Rochester and Sioux Falls than they are in Crookston and Thompson and Mayville. So yet, the people that are doing the everyday work may be more inclined to be on the same, on a similar, on a similar salary structure. So that's why I was anticipating that we would see a comparison of data. Maybe it's too late. Is there any way we could survey the other nine cities and ask them so that we can take a look at the actual data?
I could provide you the data for 2020. When it was implemented, and the differences in the 3.08 versus it was 3.44 with the 12 survey data, but we use the 2021, or the 21.
Last year.
For 2020's salary plan.
Yep.
And it indicated during our salary plan presentation that moving forward, we were going to do the overall with the 12.
I believe you. I believe that that's what it said.
And so, and so that was part of the salary plan presentation, and what was approved and adopted by the city council.
So in essence, what I'm asking you for today, we did last year.
We did for 2020.
For 2020, for 2020. Even though last year's, we did the salary survey for all 21 cities?
No, we did 12 last year.
Nope. We did all 21, because I looked at, I looked at last year's salary survey yesterday. I would go back and look at last year's salary survey. I could be wrong, don't get, so.
I can follow up and combine.
I'm pretty confident I looked at it. I looked at it yesterday, and although it had the list of the 12, the 12 cities, it also included the list of all 21. So I'm pretty confident we actually surveyed all 21 last year.
So I think last year, was that the opportunity to look at both? And the end, it got scrapped because we.
Getting at what I think I'm, what I think I'm asking for now, we actually did last year, and now that I'm, I wish I'd gone back and watched it, because I'm getting deja vu like I asked these questions last year. So, okay.
I can gather that data, and I will send it out to refresh everybody's memory.
Okay, actually, before doing a bunch of work, I'm going to go back and watch last year's Committee of the Whole from July 13th and confirm, and if I have questions, how about I get back to you?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm getting, see now, I'm old.
Anybody wish to follow that? Mr. Weber?
I'll try to keep it very short. I won't make any mention of railroad development here. This isn't so much as a question for tonight, but maybe for the future. Bismarck, West Fargo, Moorhead, they are some that were ahead of us, or that offered larger increases. Do we have any sense if they were better able to recruit and retain because, as a result of those? You could answer it now, or next week, or next time we discuss this.
Thank you, Councilmember Weber. That was, that's a great question. Just the general overall consensus across the state is it's very difficult to recruit at this point. I have not had any of those conversations with other entities, whether their, their percentage increases have provided an edge to them in recruiting, but I can ask. I can certainly reach out to those entities and, and see what they say.
Great, thanks. One other small thing, first, first, it looks like, you know, just, this is our first look at it, but it looks like a very well, looks like a great budget. I especially like the salary plan. So thank you, Mayor Pachinski and city staff, and everyone involved in that. Only one additional engineer in the, in the current plan? Is that sufficient?
Well, I think that's, back to your recruitment, that's been the problem, you know, the hard part, and with that engineer that we're adding, we are hoping to offset some of that with charges for services that that engineer would provide, but that is probably one of the hardest things. I'm sure Al could speak to that until he's blue in the face, but it's been difficult to, to recruit those positions.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, Ms. Dorstad.
All right, I think that's it for.
All right, we'll move on to, yeah, we'll move on to three. I suppose I read the main items, three public hearings and second readings of ordinances.
All right, 3.1, then, public hearing on amendment to CDBG Annual Action Plan.
Thank you, and I know Ms. Richards is here for any further questions on that, but I'll open up to comment or motions. Actually, I'll open the public hearing first. Public hearing opened for 3.1. Public hearing closed. All right, Mr. Sandy moves for approval, second from Mr. Weber with the head nod. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously.
3.2, public hearing and second reading of ordinance relating to Class 8.1 Craftfield alcoholic beverage license.
Thank you, and I know, I believe Ryan Brooks is here if we need any questions on that, but we'll open the public hearing. Okay, public hearing is closed. Any questions, comments, or motions? Got a motion approved from Mr. Sandy, a second from Mr. Weber. Well, since, while we do this, I know Dan, we've been working on this, so state your reason for recusal, and if anyone really objects, so as we can make a motion to excuse the conflict, and you can vote.
I have a professional conflict of interest with Craftfield being able to sell alcoholic beverages. Is that sufficient? Mr. Gostad.
The only question I have is, does that conflict, does it provide some sort of financial gain, or?
It could, yes.
Does ordinance change what?
If, if the Craftfield is unable to sell alcoholic beverages, it could affect my financial gain.
All right, we got a motion. All right, well, we'll jump the pass. We got a motion, a second, so all those in favor of allowing Mr. Cavani to be recused, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, Mr. Cavani, you're out. Now, now entertain a motion from Mr. Sandy to approve 3.2, and we have a second from Ms. Vice President Mock. Any further comment? Ms. Mock, please.
Mr. Gostad, so when we change this, does that mean that class would be able to sell in cans or bottles going forward, or is that just for Craftfield?
It's just, the license is just for Craftfield.
Oh, okay, so if we had another instance, we would have to craft that language?
Correct. If you had that, if you had that conflict with somebody having to sell cans or, you know. It only deals with Craftfield.
All right, any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 3.2 carries unanimously.
3.3, public hearing on request of vacate utility easement lying within Lot K, Block 1, Columbia Park, 343 subdivision.
All right, great. We'll open the public hearing for 3.3. Public hearing period is closed. We have a, got a motion from Mr. Weigle. We got a second from Mr. Veen. Any further comments on 3.3? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 3.3 carries unanimously. All right, so around to the action items, number four. City staff, obviously, everyone wants to pull 4.6. I would like, if I could get a motion to move 412 to the end between, right before adjournment, so between item 9 and 10, because we'll be going into executive session, can I get that motion? Motion from Mr. Weber, and a second from Mr. Sandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so we'll move 412 to the very end. With that, we'd pull 4.6. Is there any other items that council members wish to pull at this time? All right, we will move.
We, we have some people from the public here. Is anyone wanting something to discuss?
I think they're on 4.6, so I think we'll be good. That 4.6 has been pulled, so we'll go forward on consent, then on 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, excuse me, scratched 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, 4.10, and 4.11. Did I do that right, Sherri?
Yes.
All right. Any comment? We got a motion from Mr. Weigle.
I'll ask a quick question. Is there any interest in discussing bus shelters? No. Okay, very good, thanks.
We got a second from Ms. Mock. All right, any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry, those items carry.
4.6, review of city code relating to alcohol licensing. Draft ordinances from city attorney Dan Gostad are attached, listed in four parts, cleanup ordinance relating to alcohol licensing, minors on premises, delivery of alcohol, and repeal of certain classes, modified Class 4, including gaming, and new statutory changes. Also provided for attachments are the listing of gaming sites and summary of alcohol license and holders.
So, Mr. Gostad, you've been waiting patiently. I think I will do this. Why don't we just call it, we'll go each four individually, so we're not doing it all at once, in case there's, you know, one that somebody doesn't want versus another. Why don't we call it 4.6.1, and we'll let you start working your way through it, if you want to give an outline, and then we'll have a conversation.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, what, 4.6.1 is, it's a cleanup ordinance. It's, it's to clean up language based upon some state statutes that were adopted the last legislative session, to make reference to not just partnerships, but, you know, limited partnerships, things like that, and then also dealing with the, what I'd call counting of licenses. I know we went through this in detail in the, in the COW, the last go-around, so what I thought I'd do is just, because of that, the COW meeting, I'll just go through some of the modifications that were made from the last recitation of these statutes. First, there was a change, it was 2102061B. I found another reference to partnership, and so I just added limited partnership to that particular section. 2102061E, this was a result of Councilmember Weigle's comment about the application and including misdemeanors of crime of violence, including domestic violence, to be included within the limitation that would actually preclude somebody from being able to get a liquor license. And then that would be limited to within the last five years. 210211, this is the counting of licenses. You can only have two licenses within each particular class. What I did is, there was discussion about, there were, you were going to count your parent as, as being counted within that analysis. That was removed, based upon the last discussion. Also, there was, in the last version that we reviewed at the COW, there was a limitation as having a 1% interest in a corporate entity. That was removed to say any interest in a corporate entity. Also, the, there was provision about an employee, or employees being counted as well, and that was removed based upon the last discussion. Then 2102225, that was based upon, Ms. Swanson had pointed this out, about the habitual drunkard. That actually got changed in, I think, the 2019 legislation, just didn't get adopted in our ordinances, so. The one thing, and I, this is probably my Scrivener's error, the effective date, you'll notice what we did is, is there are multiple effective dates, because some of the state statutes don't become effective till August 1st. One becomes effective after June 30th, and then the rest would become effective upon publication. And so we tried to break it out to make sure it's consistent as to when the effective date is. From, there's one Scrivener's error in items B and C, I'd probably say from and after July 1 of 2020, and from and after August 1st of 2021. So it doesn't suggest that it's effective only on one day, and no longer effective. That was my Scrivener's error, so I'd suggest that be modified as far as the effective If you have any questions on that particular ordinance, be, and then we can go on to the next.
Yep, Mr. Veen.
I have just a question, procedurally, is this a first reading? Is this what this is considered? I know you say draft ordinance, so this is here for the first reading.
Correct.
And then we would have the public hearing at the next, at the next city council meeting, so I'm just procedurally trying to make sure we don't.
This is a first reading of the ordinances. That is correct.
All right, any comments on 4.6.1?
One question.
Yep, Ms., I'll start with Vice President Mock, then Mr. Weber.
Mr. Gostad, you said you removed language on the employee. Was that, so I think the concern was for like an ESOP. Is that, removing that, we think that takes care of that issue, so.
I believe it does.
Members of an ESOP would not be limited? Okay.
From my view, it would, you wouldn't count, if I owned a, if I had a liquor license, my employees wouldn't be deemed to have that liquor license as well, and so it addressed that ESOP issue.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Weber.
I'll move approval with the cleanup of language under Section 7.
Okay, so you, you motion for approval of what we're calling 4.6.1?
Yes.
It's tardy, okay. As it stands, we got a second from Mr. Cavani. Any further comments? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. So 4.6.1 passes unanimously. Mr. Gostad, you gotta do this four times, so.
All right, 4.6.2, this is, consider this minors on premises. First, it cleaned up language as to what a restaurant is, for purposes of when minors can either be on premises or work in, in one of the classed licenses. It also, there were some changes due to state law. For example, I think it was the change in 210228 subdivision 2, the discretion of the owner, that's state statute. So that was an example of a change that was done the last legislative session. And then also, this really then addresses when employees can work in a Class 1 that may be under the age of 21. The changes that were made since the last COW was, if you take a look at 2102281B, as far as an establishment holding, I've added Class 1 along with the Class 3, 5, 7, 8.2, so Class 1 is now listed as a possible restaurant. The reason that was added was so that they would then be a restaurant for purposes of allowing minors to work on the premises, as we'll get to in just a second. 212282B, this is just kind of a language thing that I probably overlooked. I added the word annual gross sales in a couple of spots. It just said gross sales, to make it clear what we're talking about. 212282D, I added language except as limited in the next section, which is a new section, which deals with minors working in Class 1 license holders. I put that language in there because the way I've drafted minors being, working at a Class 1 is they cannot serve alcohol, unlike maybe a Class 4 where they can. Here with the Class, this is the way I've drafted it anyways, obviously subject to modification, but that's the reason why I added that language, except as limited under the following section. And then added the new subsection E that allows for underage individuals to work in Class 1 restaurant, alcohol beverage restaurant, as long as they're 18 years old. They do not serve alcohol beverages, and then in order, to have some limitation as to they have some meals that are served, their, at least a third of their annual gross sales are from sale of food and meals prepared on-site. And again, the last part of it, the effective dates, because some of them are effective August 1, we, we added that language in there, and again, it should be from and after August 1, that Scrivener's change in Section 2 as far as effectiveness for future effective dates.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gostad. I think probably two of the, you know, obviously it's the under the age of 18, two of the main things to look at would probably be, what can the person that's 18 to 21 do? And then possibly another option, if you're 16-plus in the back kitchen, you know, with a time restraint of maybe 10:00 PM when the, when the kitchens close, so that you could work. kitchen's closed, so that you could work as a line cook or a dishwasher, the only other, you know, things that I would think could be added, but that's, you know, up to council, they want to make a motion or look at that. And what's everybody's thoughts on that range?
And maybe, I think the question the mayor is asking is, right now, the way it's drafted is there's no time limitation as to what, somebody that's 18, between 18 and 21 can work. They can work till the place closes. If you wanted to go to a younger age to allow somebody to be working in the kitchen, that's, I believe allowable under the state statutes, it would be allowable. But whether you wanted to put some limitation in there as far as what time they'd have to end their employment on a daily, nightly basis.
Yeah, I think 18 plus, I mean, you're a college student, you should, you know, probably have the freedom to work, you know, the entire shift, I would imagine, I guess that, and it's just, who wants to start? Have you got any comments? Mr. Sandy, please.
I have a question, Mr. Gossett. The 33 and a third percent, I understand you had to start somewhere. Did we survey any?
I did, I did not.
Good. We'll leave that up for the public hearing, when they come back in a couple weeks, if there, if that's an issue. I mean, I don't know, I don't know where to draw the line, but if we, if by putting in 33 and a third, we don't actually snag any of them, then I'm not sure that we're accomplishing anything here, but we'll see. And yeah, as long as, in my opinion, young people, 16 and older, if they're working in, for example, washing dishes, and they're out of public view, I wouldn't have a problem with them working, myself, 16 to 18-year-olds, I don't see an issue with that.
So maybe that would be a 16 and 17-year-old, would that be the best way to write that, with a little limitation at 10:00 PM in the back?
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay.
Or even 9:00 PM, probably would be okay, but whatever.
Mr. Gossett, this is a procedural thing here. If we're going to make amendments to this, as it gets brought forward at the second reading and the public hearing, at that point, we wouldn't really, that wouldn't be the time for amendments. Amendments should be taking place between this hearing and the second one, or should all the amendments be instructed to you tonight?
Well, I would, between now and the second reading, if there are amendments to be made, and I'm hearing right now, it's 16 to 17, at 10:00 PM, if there are other changes, we can certainly make them before the second reading is completed.
Okay, but once we've, sort of, I guess, once we've posted that in our agenda on Friday, at that point, we pretty much should go with that, or with an up and down. I know we had this instance in the past, so I'm just asking to clarify.
We did have this instance in the past, and I think there's council members that disagreed, that even at the second reading, you can continue to amend the ordinance at that time. I think that you could, I mean, I'd probably stand corrected at that point. I think you could probably bring amendments in even before the second reading, at the second, two weeks from now, and it could be voted on at that time. So you can amend even during the second reading time period. I will stand corrected on that position.
Oh, Mr. Veen was right then. Again. I know, geez, you're gonna be a big head now. I guess the other question on the, unless you got something else, Mr. Veen?
No, I think that that's the intent to the public hearing. Once we have a public hearing and we hear from the public, we should have the opportunity to make a change. That's what I was saying before. I still agree that that's the way that we should move forward.
Well, and I think we've kind of opened up, you know, generally, you would have the public hearing in the second reading, but I think we've, you know, at times opened it up, even, you know, at the first reading, and even at the COW, for example. So I would say, I guess, I'd be looking if people are okay with that motion, to add the language for the 16 to 17. In the kitchen or back area, you'll have to figure the wording for that until 10:00 PM. That can be adjusted next week. And I think some more thought into where the 18-year-olds can be active. Can they, for example, not mix drinks, but can they deliver as if they're serving until 10:00 PM or something, while the food's going? Maybe that's for council to ponder in the meantime.
We have some business owners here. Are there any Department of Labor laws already covering those 16, 17-year-olds, Mr. Gossett, or business owners?
As far as?
As far as how late they can work, how many hours they can work?
I'm sure there would be. That wouldn't be necessarily within the alcohol licensing. They'd still be subject to those labor laws, irrespective.
Right, right. I'm just wondering if those laws already exist, if it's necessary for us to debate them in the ordinance, because they might already be covered, but.
I can certainly check to see if it would make, if, I think what you're saying, Councilmember Weber, is if they can't work past 10 o'clock, it doesn't make any difference.
We don't need to put it in here.
However, if those labor laws do change, then that, this, if you don't put some limitation in there, then those changes wouldn't necessarily apply.
I see. Thanks.
Sounds good. So for now, should we keep the 33 and a third until the public hearing?
Sure.
All right, so can we get a motion? I guess the motion would be to amend it to include the language regarding 16 and 17-year-olds and keep the remaining as is, going to the second reading?
Is that your motion?
We got a motion from Mr. Veen, and we have a second from Mr. Kavami. Any further discussions on 4.6.2? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 4.6.2 carries unanimously. 4.6.3, Mr. Gossett.
All right, this is the delivery ordinance. And again, I'll just briefly talk about that, I, in my research, I discovered a, an older opinion back in, from 1990 in Nick's faith, concluding that delivery of beer was not allowed under North Dakota law. However, there is homeroll authority, and I believe that the city has the authority to adopt an ordinance in this regard, because there is no state stat, no conflicting state statute that gives rise to any type of criminal penalties. There isn't even a state statute with respect to delivery. I also noted, and I think we talked about this before, is the city Minot has a delivery ordinance on its books. You could certainly request an Attorney General's opinion if you wanted, to clarify that, to, you know, make the ordinance effective upon issuance of a positive Attorney General's opinion if you wanted. With that said, what I did is, the changes are significant from the last, because we didn't have anything in front of you at that time. So I'll go through, really, what was drafted as far as a delivery ordinance is concerned. It is, it parrots a lot from the existing emergency order, and from the Minot stat ordinance. First, only Class 1, 3, 4, 16, and then the new manufacturing distillery, the satellite restaurant, would be allowed to do deliveries. You have to purchase a meal with the delivery. It has to be from a restaurant, and the language that is shown there, as far as what a restaurant is, is the same as a Class 4 type of restaurant. You have a dedicated kitchen. The license holder has to have a seating capacity of at least 40 persons, and that at least 60% of their meals are for onsite consumption. Again, trying to address the issue of avoiding, for example, a Domino's from becoming a delivery service. The person delivering has to be 21 years or older, and has to have the server training requirement. Vehicles have to have placards, either painted or the magnetic on the vehicles that are being used to deliver the alcohol. There cannot be no, any third-party delivery service, taxi cabs, Uber, et cetera. Obviously, the person receiving the order has to be 21 years or older. There is a fairly detailed requirement as to the receipt that needs to be obtained from the person receiving the alcohol. This is, really parrots from what Minot has, and then in their ordinance. The delivery times are limited, and I included Christmas Day to avoid the, being able to deliver, but not being able to have on-premises alcohol sales. So it parrots the timing as to when you can be open for on-sale. And then, the last item is the quantity. The amounts there are really 50% of what exists in the current emergency order. But the current emergency order didn't indicate how many of the items you could get in any one particular delivery, so I've identified that you could only get two out of the four listed. So you could get, you know, 72 fluid ounces is a six-pack of beer. You could get a 12-pack, for example, or you could get a six-pack and one bottle of wine. I think that's, that's it. I went through it fairly quickly, but that's the changes that were, or the proposal that's being made.
All right, I'll open up to council if they have any questions, or general comments or motions. I see Mr. Sandy.
Just a quick question, Mr. Gossett. Thank you. You did a really good job putting this together. I think you really captured the discussion that we had previously, and I really appreciate your attention to detail. Just morbidly curiosity, there are establishments that fall under this exception, that don't currently have the ability to sell off-sale. But is there anything under this that would preclude them from essentially selling off-sale by delivery? I mean, other than they have to, you have, yeah, they have to have the food, delivery, and it's too, okay.
You gotta have a meal, and you've, and it's, the quantity of alcohol that can be delivered is limited.
Yeah, very good. I'll move approval.
We have a second?
I'll second for the sake of discussion, and then I have a question.
Thank you. Second from Mr. Weber, open up the discussion. Mr. Weber, I'm assuming you'd like to discuss.
Yes, please. Consultation with the police department and health department on this?
I did not reach out to either the police department. I did talk to Chief Nelson on another matter today, but he didn't raise this, this particular delivery. The other thing that I probably should have pointed out is, nothing in here weighs any requirement as far as open containers, or any other type of, you know, infraction that could occur. As far as public health department, the only comment I got was with respect to the manufacturing and the amount of ounces that could be served, and that, we'll be talking about that in the next ordinance. But I did not specifically reach out to the health department on the matter.
Chief Nelson, Ms. Swanson, anything to add at this point? Okay. Very good, thanks.
All right, we got a motion, a second. Do we have more comments? Ms. Mock?
With the no third-party delivery, I understand why we're including it, and I support including it. Do we have any idea of how we would enforce that? Or, I guess, I mean, I think that business owners get plenty frustrated with third-party delivery advertising, that they will do it for them, and they get frustrated by that, because they would prefer to do it themselves. So I'm just wondering how we would make sure that they wouldn't then take those sales that concerned alcohol?
Yeah, you know, I think the enforcement mechanism is through this receipt process, because that receipt is subject to police department review. And again, this is coming out of the Minot ordinance, which seemed logical to me. You know, it's one of, it's not a perfect enforcement mechanism, although I would.
So then, is that an issue that the business owner would then discuss with the police?
It would be.
The city, if they noticed that it was happening, that there was like a third party that was delivering, and they did, they noticed it through their auditing process, would they then raise that concern with the city?
It would, it would raise a concern as to whether they should continue to have a license to do this type of, if they're violating this ordinance, that would serve as a basis to either revoke or not renew their license, I believe, the way the city ordinances exist. So if you're violating this ordinance, as it would be adopted, assuming, again, you're, it's discovered, right?
Okay.
That certainly, I would think, would weigh in on their continuing to hold a license, and/or a renewal of their license if they're violating this or any other alcohol licensing provision.
And these deliveries, the deliverers would have to be members, or would have to be employed by the business, by the restaurant owner, so they would have oversight, and of course, if they broke, that they'd be subject to losing their liquor license. Anything else? Any further, Mr. Weber?
Actually, I have a question for President Sandy, if I may. You and I were among those who were supportive of this change during the pandemic, but at that time, we said, once the pandemic's over, this is done. Help me to understand again why you might support this now?
I, as I mentioned previous meeting, I had made, had discussions and made promises to previous business owners that I would only support this, the delivery of alcohol, if we put things back the way they had started. As I discussed at the committee of the whole, I have subsequently spoken with those same people, and they're all in agreement that this is really no harm, no foul, and so they were on board. As long as, as long as it was, you have to deliver it with alcohol, no pop-up shops, or, I'm sorry, you have to deliver it with food, and no third-party delivery services, they were okay with it.
Any further comment, council? Mr. Veen?
Just one question. It doesn't matter how much food. You can order the cheapest thing or whatever on the menu, and still get a 12-pack of beer.
Correct.
Was it listed as a meal or food?
It's listed as a, what is it? I just want to make sure I get the right language. Food, delivered food or meals prepared by the licensed establishment on its premises. So you're right, there is no, there is no maximum or minimum food order, as it's currently drafted.
The corn dog and 12-pack special.
I don't know, that part, just, I'm not sure. I would love to see the public have a chance to respond, though.
Sounds good. Any further comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
I believe, I didn't, I know we had one dissent from Mr. Weber, I believe the rest did, but the motion carries. All right, 4.6.4.
All right, the last of the four, this deals with repealing some of the unused licenses. Also modifying Class 4, and we'll talk a bit about that, and then really redefining the Class 4 to allow for gaming within their, what's called the Class 4 designated lounge area. And then also some additional statutory length changes that were made because of some legislation, particularly with that manufacturing distillery, the Class 17. Changes since the last time we reviewed this particular, these particular statutes was, Councilmember Sandy had made mention about the Class 5, and not having similar language with respect to the gaming, designated gaming area where minors can't be in. I think they were operating in that regard, but I've added language consistent with what I did with the Class 4, that there is now a designated gaming area for Class 5, and minors can't be within that particular area. So that was added since the last time we discussed. And then, Class 17, Ms. Swanson shared with me a memo with respect to the sample size, as far as the distillery is concerned, and it, I think we've complied with what she was requesting, that it's one fluid ounce per sample, and no more than three fluid ounces per day, per person. And then, because the last discussion at the COW, I didn't have the gaming ordinance that was part of that, I've included the change to 90404 that allows for now class, gaming in the Class 4 designated lounge area. The rest of the items that were in the changes were discussed at the last COW. But I'm open to answer any questions on those, or the changes that were made. to, to answer any questions on those or, or the changes that were made. And I think I've got, again, that Scrivener's error of from and after August 1st date, on the effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Gosstead. Open up just to, open this up to a comment from counsel.
I'll move approval with the suggested change at the end.
Okay. We have a second.
Second.
We've got a second. We have any further comments? Well, right now, we have a motion and a second. If you, we've got, this isn't the public hearing, so we could entertain that if you'd like, or we can wait till the public hearing. And they've waited a long time, so I guess what does counsel want to do?
I have the feeling we should let people talk, no matter when, so...
Sounds good.
Public hearing is the official one, but any time between now and then is fine with me.
Sounds good. We got general consensus on that, so let's, if anyone would like to speak on the matter Mr. McMenamy, please.
Hi, you guys. I'm Michael McMenamy, 1819 Cottonwood Street, Grand Forks. Also own and operate McMenamy's Tavern here in Grand Forks. I know I spoke a couple of weeks ago, a couple, three weeks ago. I just want to stress again how I feel about this. I really, really honestly feel, if you put this through, you're going to be opening up a great big can of worms. What's next? Ralph Ingleset Arena, Alaris, convenience stores, gas stations? Where does it end? It's, it just seems like it just keeps going and going and going in this industry. And I strongly feel that in, in, in the restaurants, minors will have access, much easier access to it. I know it's supposed to be a bar area, and they're supposed to be watching it, but, you know, right now, you have places where you have, on the premise, you have alcohol and minors, and now you want to add gaming to that. I just want to say, I, I feel it could be a big problem down the road, and if it is, and where there's another meeting, if the coalition people get together and say there's a problem, I just want all of us Class 1 license holders to be left out of it. If we're doing our jobs, I don't want the finger pointed at us, because minors aren't even allowed on our premise. Okay? So I want to stress that, because, believe me, I've been at this for a number of years now. I've been in this room more times than I really care to be. I'd much rather be at my place, you know, running my business and taking care of things, but I just cannot stress this enough. Another point I'd like to make, you know, if you do this, I mean, who's to say what charity that the restaurants are going to choose? Now, as I understand it, it's youth hockey, Grand Forks youth hockey that is, that has proposed this? I'm, I'm not even sure. Can I get an answer from someone, or no?
I think there's been a number of different nonprofits that have expressed interest. I think there's a gentleman here tonight that can speak on one of those sides of it, I believe.
Okay, so there's more than one, other charities are asking? I'm, I'm not sure. But like I said, you know, as I understand it, so, you know, you want a, a local charity, that's where the money's going to stay in Grand Forks. Who's to say what the, all these corporate places are going to pick? You know, some of these corporate places, you know, they don't have completely 100 vested roots in Grand Forks, like I do. They could choose a charity from a different city. You know, I think that's something that you guys should consider. So, I mean, guys, I could go on and on and on and tell many, many stories, but I've been here a long time tonight, and so has everyone else. But those are the points I really want to stress and emphasize.
All right. Thank you. Mr. McMenamy, I got a couple of questions before you sense you're up here. Could you currently have gaming from outside the city? Someone come in from the Grafton Curling Club, for example?
Sure. As, as I understand it, I, I believe so, yes.
It would be no different in a new place?
Honestly, yeah. I've had people from Fargo and other cities approach me.
Okay. Do you have gaming in your establishment currently?
I do.
How do you tell if someone's 21 or under that's gaming there?
That, we card.
Oh, you card?
Oh, yes.
Okay. My next question, I mean, if this is a competition thing, I can understand that. Is your main concern the children, certainly if any of these other places, like a gas station, would have to come before us, and we'd have to make that decision? Your concern is not competition, it's mainly the children and other establishments?
It, it's part of it. The minors, that's part of it. And competition, oh, sure. You know, I'm a business, I'm in business, you know? But I, what I, what I don't want is to be blamed. I don't want the finger pointed at me. You know, we went through this with underage drinking. You know, 2000, all of a sudden, we got the letter from the police department about compliance checks. Why? What's going on when I call? Well, there's too many, you know, minors getting alcohol. Well, can we have a meeting? Well, it's too late, it's already in place. That's what I'm really talking about here. And, and it's frustrating and maddening. I'm doing my very best, and so are the other of my Class 1 license holders, people, and I know they are too, and they do their very best to watch it. Do some minor sneak bias? Sure. But is it all the time? No. And we watch it. We do our very best.
Okay, so I had the chance to go down to Fargo a few weeks ago. I had the Buffalo Wild Wings there. My kids, I'm a parent, I got a seven-year-old, a nine-year-old, and a 12-year-old. They have gaming at the, at the Buffalo Wild Wings in Fargo, would be kind of considered Class 4 here. I didn't have any concerns of my kids, you know, stumbling into gambling. There certainly, we can protect kids from everything, but certainly parents have to parent their kids. I haven't heard it, you know, going to gas stations or the Fargo Dome or anything in Fargo. I go to my cabin in Minnesota, they've got pull tabs. My kids sit at this table while we pull pull tabs. I haven't had any concern at all that my kids were going to end up being gamble-holics. They aren't old enough to gamble, they can't. I guess what I'm trying to wrap my head around is that I understand where you're coming from, I, I love your, your passion for this, I can feel it, but if it's working well in those areas, what's going to be different here than the other places where it, it does work?
It's like down in Fargo, I wasn't aware that Buffalo Wild Wings had, I'm assuming they have the E-tab machines in there?
Yeah.
Was it paper pull tabs or E-tab or?
You know, I didn't pay a whole lot of attention to it, because I was eating.
Right. And, you know, how long has it been there? You know, I'm not saying you put these machines in, and the next day, there's going to be, you know, a problem. You know, it could take some time. And I'm not talking about, you know, the seven, eight, and 10-year-olds, I'm talking about the 17, 18, 19-year-old, 20-year-olds, you know, going over there and, you know, and playing, and, and, I mean, if, if the law's the law, and I just, I foresee this as being a problem, a potential problem.
All right. Any further, anything else for Mr. McMenamy?
All right. Thank you, sir. Good.
Do we have any others that were wishing to speak?
Hi there, thank you. Brad Lucky, 289 Emerald Lane. I'm also with Grand Forks Youth Hockey Association. I've been up here in front of you, I think, a couple of times through this discussion, and just again, want to reiterate our support and address a couple of the issues that have been brought up. I know just recently here, we've, we've, during the committee meeting, and again, tonight, there was discussion about who will be allowed to come into these sites, and I think it's up to the business owners to make those decisions. From the conversations I've had with local Class 4 license restaurants, they are looking for opportunities to support local youth organizations, not just ours. So I think there's, I feel very comfortable saying there's going to be opportunities for new charitable gaming sites to, to pop up in Grand Forks. Along with that, as you guys, I'm sure, are aware, site agreements are brought to you guys, so whoever's going to go in there, whether it's Grafton, Curling, or one of the already established gaming sites, that's up to you guys to approve every site agreement. When we talk about this, and I've, I've talked to a number of you already, I don't think we're reinventing the wheel here. Everything we're talking about is already being done. You look at the Class 5 license in Grand Forks right now, you will have minors on-premise there, you can also have gaming in those sites. I think it sounds like we've just cleaned it up to maybe better establish how that's set up, but it's not new. Fargo, West Fargo, Bismarck, Minot, this is already happening. If you go over to the Blue Moose right now, you can have kids in there and you can buy pull tabs. This is not something new. I think it's something that's being done, and this is just kind of updating the policies here to make it more business-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, anybody got any questions for Mr. Lucky?
I just have a question in general.
Okay. Ms. Mock, you're good.
Were we going to have a subcommittee that looked at this and got some of these different groups together and met on alcohol to recommend anything to us? I, I seem to remember that we were. I don't think I was on that, though, so...
Yeah, I think that that was a proposal to have a subcommittee. I think Mr. Gosstead went ahead, we had waited three months, and that didn't come to fruition, and then I think he'd, I mean, his staff did all the work for a lot of those cleanups, and that's how we've arrived today.
Yeah, and I could answer that, too, is, is part of the motivation is that some of the, like, for example, the delivery ordinance is going to expire at the end of this month, and so I think there is some motivation to, to, at least with respect to that, that particular issue, is to bring it forward to the council before the expiration, so you had an answer by the end of that term, and then I just took it, really, upon myself, because I understood that we had that special committee, the whole meeting, I think it was the end of May, where we, where we had some discussion about alcohol licensing, and then, and then from that particular meeting, I went through and, and looked at some proposed changes that could be made to the, to the ordinances in total. So that's probably the precipitating event. Maybe I was a little fast on the track, but that's what I decided to do.
All right. Do we have any further comments? We've got a motion and a second. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
I believe we have five yays and two nays, so the motion carries. All right, we'll move on to five informational items.
Hang on one second. The investment portfolio summary as of April 30th. 5.1.
Thank you.
And then 5.2, statement of changes in cash balance as of March 31st. And 5.3 is the COVID update that's attached.
Yep, there's an upload, there won't be, with conversation with Ms. Swanson, this will be the last sort of formal COVID update in the future. The COVID updates will be, you know, ad hoc as needed, but, you know, I think Mr. Duhus deserves and continues to deserve a lot of credit for all the data points. Just about every time I met him, he had a new chart that was using data to show us where things were going or, or moving to, so what a phenomenal job, and, and I'm sure he'll, he'll continue to share that data, but this, it's kind of a neat moment. This is, you know, the COVID update, this is essentially the last planned one, so I think that's pretty exciting. All right, moving on to six, citizen comments. Open it up to citizen comments. Do we have anybody who was interested in speaking?
All right, citizen comments closed. Seven, approval of minutes and bills.
7.1, vendor list and engineer's estimate as is presented.
Do we have a motion to approve the vendor list? Mr. Weigle, motions, and Ms. Mock, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion is approved. Motion passes.
And 7.2, we have minutes from March 1st included, and as well as March 15th, 29th, and April 5th.
Thank you. I think Mr. Sandy, they added everything from last time to give us some more time, so, perfect. And he'll move approve several minutes. Do we have a second? Second from Mr. Kavami. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved. Eight, city administrator comments. Do you have anything tonight, Todd, or are you going to spare us?
Just thank you for all your attention. Lots of great stuff on the agenda. It was a lot of stuff, but you know, it's a good sign that we made it out of the pandemic in pretty good shape, so thanks for all your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Nine, mayor and council member comments. Mr. Weigle, any comments tonight?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Dokler?
No, thank you.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, very quickly, everyone should be aware that on June 22nd, the residents of Grand Forks have an opportunity to go to the polls to vote on the Grand Forks Public School referendum. You'll vote on two issues, including Part 1, an $86 million bond for projects that will do the following three things. A, create a new K-8 campus, which will also permanently close West Winship and Wilder Schools. That's approximately $64 million. Address, B would be address priority projects across a number of schools in the system. That's about $15.4 million. And C, locate a new kitchen at the district office, approximately $6.4 million. Total cost for the bond for the owner of a median-priced home in Grand Forks, which is approximately $220,000, will be about $25 a month. Part 2, the second issue, is a 10-mil levy for the district's building fund. The cost for a median-priced home will see an increase of about $11 a month. Voting in favor of both will result in a property tax increase of about $36 a month. You can vote by going to the Alaris Center on June 22nd. There is free public transportation available that day. You can also vote by absentee ballot. To request your ballot, call the county at 780-8200, or the school district, 746-2200. Please note that absentee ballots must be postmarked by June 21st. This is coming up fast, and will have significant impact for property owners across the city, as well as students and their families, especially those living in the city's north end. So whether you're inclined to vote in favor or opposed to the referendum, there's some good information online. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mr. Kavami?
No, thank you.
Mr. Vean? Vice President Mock?
Just some concerns on traffic issues, so I'll get in touch with the engineering department on that for certain areas of town.
Well, that's great. You can also join me on KNOX one day, we'll have to talk about that quite extensively. Or Mr. Sandy on Wednesday, you could do both. Mr. Sandy?
Yeah. Got to, got to give Todd Hanson credit. Still haven't seen mosquito, or it could be Mother Nature, since it hasn't rained in months. Either way, our mosquito control is stellar this year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. President Sandy, I've got no comments tonight, just, just happy to see a lot of, a lot of positive things moving forward, and we're, we're going in the right direction, so that's great to see. With that, we're going to move to 4.12.
Discuss the pending litigation of cases of East Central Region Water District versus City Grand Forks, U.S. District Court, case number 320-CV208, and authorize city attorney to bring a third-party complaint or others' claims the city attorney deems warranted.
All right, so at this time, I'd be looking for a motion to enter executive session to discuss the pending litigation of the cases of East Central Regional Water District versus the city of Grand Forks, under the legal authority of the North Dakota Century Code 44-04-19.1 and 44-04-19.2, for the purpose of attorney consultation on the pending litigation. Can I receive a motion on that?
I'll move.
So move from Mr. Weber and a second from Mr. Weigle. We'll give a minute to, to clear the room, and then we'll list who's in here and the time. Did I get a vote on that?
Yeah.
Let's give that a motion a second. Can I get a, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries, and I'll be entering executive session, so those that weren't sort of predetermined to be here, please exit the room. Mr. Denault, I'm going to have to ask you to leave the room. I'm going to have to ask you to leave the room, sir, we're entering executive session on pending litigation. Thank you.
Good to see you, Dennis.
If the sergeant-at-arms could close the doors, if he hasn't left, otherwise, the backup will be Mr. Grasser.